Invite our guests to join the council and staff in a pledge which tonight will be led by Mr. Jack Jackson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under your eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did not meet and close session this evening, so we're going to proceed directly to our general administration agenda, item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. We are not permitted under state law to take action on issues that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards, it's available near the front door, and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to assure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, and to then, and we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We also recognize that for a lot of folks speaking in public and on television involves a little bit of anxiety, and so we ask that there not be any demonstrations or boos or applause or cat calls, and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. When we get to the regular agenda, we do ask that the cards be turned in prior to the conclusion of the staff report. Once the council's questions and discussions end the public testimony begin, we won't be taking an additional card. So if you think you'll be wanting to speak on one of the agenda items later on, the sooner you turn it in, the better. All right, with that, we do have several requests to speak under item 1A, and the first is by Mary LaSalle.
I wanted to thank Charlie Schubert and his crew for trimming the trees back. When you're coming back from Woodland, it was hard to see the people going west when we were going east to turn onto Riverbank. And so that was also an effort with Ray Santiago and Peter Hanson and Deena Curley. So I just wanted to let you know, it's made it safer for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaSalle. Carlos Padilla? Carlos Padilla? Okay, then Yolanda Villanueva.
As you're aware, my name is Yolanda Villanueva. I also ran for city council. So I've had a very tough, tough year. I started in October, and I started in my street in Cummings where I lived. And I have continuously called police, code enforcement, so many times. It's absurd. And now I lost my son. And there has been no justification for that. I mean, they have not questioned us. They claimed that my son was a Broderick boy. And as you will know and I know, that is not true. There is no such thing. We're all, then I'm a Broderick lady. My son has no, has never had tattoos, doesn't have an AKA name. He did have a drug problem. That's why I was fighting to run for city council, so that we can have a drug rehab here, instead of parents having to take their children to Woodland. But to say that in the media and to, and to put in the paper that my son was a Broderick boy gangster is appalling to me, since you are aware that I've been fighting the gang injunction from day one. We've been going through this and throughout. And just because his skin is brown, he's now a gangster, when he is not only Mexican, he's Filipino. You know, it's just wrong, and my heart is hurting because I tried. I tried. I ran for council. I tried to help with this community, making a better community for Broderick and Bright. And I got no justice. My son is dead. They can't, they said he had a weapon. They never found a weapon. They tested him for, what is that? Gunpowder, never had gunpowder. I don't know how and why we're not asking for an outside investigation with outside this West SAC to be investigating what took place, because NorCal did so much wrong to me and others. They have a contract with the city, the police, that they think they're God. They, they, the things they did, they tried to tow my car. I called the police. They come out with, I've had to call, I was invited to go to, to go roast, you know, Nunez and them when it was at time, and guess what happened? They came out with weapons and was beating up on kids, so I had to call the police. I mean, I've called the police so many a times on these neighbors, that their house looks, I don't even want to say it looks like real Linda. That would be an insult to real Linda. They even cleaned up their neighborhood. But for me to have, to have put up with this past year of heartache and trying so hard and trying to be in one of your seats to make a better community and reach the Latino and the, and the Russians and the Filipinos, because I do believe we can get along, show me that, I got no justice. And no one's, no one's even asked me. I've not been questioned. I've not, nothing's happening, and I want, and I'm pleading for an outside investigation of what took place when my son was murdered in the street of my house. I don't know what else to ask you, but other than Mark Cabaldin, Kristoff Belegas, I don't know much about you, Beres, but I do know that I've been working so hard to try to help this community, and I just can't see, I can't let my son die in this manner, because I was trying to make a better community. I need your help. That's what I'm asking for.
All right, thank you, Ms. Villanueva. Does Mr. Padilla come back and return to the room?
Yes, I'm here to speak with representing youth and power. I want to say first and foremost that there's a problem in Yolo County in general, and it deals with police abuse. And I think in this case, the police were called out many times to take care of this incident, and they did nothing. There was not a citation issued over this issue. They did not mediate the situation at all. If at anybody's fault, it lies on the police department's inaction. And also, the blaming that this had anything to do with a gang. Every time a Latino young man gets shot, they blame it on gangs. This is ridiculous. If you really want to get to building this community, you got to take the community seriously. This mother here ran for city council. She's the president of her district, District Labor Council and her union. She's an active member in her community. And the police inaction led to her son's death. There needs to be an investigation held on why the police did not act, because that's where the fault lies. And so, I'm here to let you know that I will be pushing for a civilian review board, and I hope that people actually take that into consideration. Because the only way that we're going to be able to handle community issues in West Sacramento is if the community gets involved. This action of blaming the Latino community, saying that it's filled with gangs, gang violence, and blaming every incident to gang issues is ridiculous. It's racist. And we got to stop doing it. Because what you're creating is more turmoil. You're going to create more violence on your streets, doing it in that manner. So if you really are for rebuilding West Sacramento, you got to get the community involved. One of those steps is creating a civilian review board for West Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. And Rochelle Redmond.
Yeah, I was here last week, and I did my speech about our code enforcement. This lady's lost her son. I've been trying, as a community member myself, trying to get my streets cleaned up. I don't want to end up in that situation, because I tattled on one of my neighbors. We need code enforcement. We need more officers. Currently, there are five officers. One is on leave. That's four officers. I brought the issue of our population growth here a couple years ago, and how that was going to put a strain on our resources. This is the strain that is on our code enforcement resources. We have a population of 45,000 people plus, and we have four officers in this city. And they're not doing anything in Broderick and Bright. And since I've been here last week, I've had people call me and stop and talk to me and say, "You go, girl. I have code enforcement issues too." They don't call us back. As a matter of fact, I called the city manager's office the next day, asked to talk to Toby Ross. They won't let you talk to Toby Ross. They want to know. What did I want to know? I said, "Well, I was at city council last night, and I want somebody to call code enforcement, Larry Brooks, Police Department, Dan Drummond, and give me an answer why that Cummings property is not cleaned up." John Robinson called me back the next day. Thank you, John. Told me he called Larry Brooks. Larry Brooks told him that he would call me. I knew he was not going to call me. I waited a week. I'm here tonight. Larry Brooks did not call me, and I wanted you guys to know that. That is the problem with our code enforcement. I have to keep calling down there and asking about properties I've put in, and have to keep updating and doing their work. And I'm getting real tired of it. And we want a better quality of life in Broderick and Bright. There was an article in the Sacramento Bee in 2005 that referred to us, when the rivers was being put in, that we were poor. Our neighborhood is poor. We're not poor. We're ran down by these shoddy properties. And I want some enforcement and some resolution to it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Redmond. Those are all the requests we have to speak under item 1A. If there's nothing further on that item, we'll proceed to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Development Corporation met on June 8th. The significant issue to report is, we agreed on a 10-year work plan that includes the developing a role and hire of a part-time social liaison contractor, which is basically someone that can go through the properties and help resource monitoring and resource forwarding. We also identify, we're going to work on identifying and plan the Mobile Home Park nonprofit ownership project that I know council member Beers is interested in, and also working with private developers on inclusionary projects. We're looking at refinancing, the possible refinancing of the loans of the Housing Development Corporation, and those are probably, we're also going to respond to the city's RFP on the foreclosure program. So those are probably the significant issues, in addition to producing 35 to 50 new affordable units, which is our work plan for next year. So that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johansson. Other communications reports? Mr. Belegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District met this morning. We now have a balanced budget, no staff reductions at the moment, so for the next year at least, the district is in good shape. And then also, one thing I want to make sure the council is aware of, the district, a few years back, I think the council will recall, we were annexed into the district in part because of the capacity of the, well, in small part because of the capacity, but for a lot of other reasons, why it made sense to decommission our existing plant. Folks in Sutter County, the Sutter Point Project, which is about 7,500 acres, and over the course of the, of the life of the development, about 36,000 homes in Sutter County, just north of the county line, Sac County line, have expressed interest in getting into the district. And so obviously, the concerns are, how do we make this happen? How do we have, how do we ensure we have capacity? Because all the things that we wanted, getting into the district, need to remain in place as we grow and that sort of thing. So today, we adopted a resolution authorizing the district to execute principles of agreement to further explore. Obviously, there's a whole lot of things that have to happen before they're allowed, annexed into the district. But it's a significant change from where we were two years ago. A lot of the conversation, a lot of the concerns at least, have centered around, how do we ensure we have capacity? How do we make sure that we don't get sort of, you know, squeezed out over time? So that continues to be something that we're concerned about. In large part, what the response has been, that the, that this new Sutter Point Project would essentially create these, these storage tanks, where during the peak flows, they would not be allowed to enter into the district line. They would have to do it at intervals where the flows are at their lowest point. So after you get through all the legalese and all the engineering discussion, it's easily, it can easily be accommodated theoretically or potentially. So, but just wanted to make sure the council was aware, that's kind of where we're headed, slowly but surely, so.
Mr. Kristoff?
I have a question. How would it affect the rate structure?
The response to that is that it would actually continue to make our rates affordable, because there's that, those economies.
Would it lower our existing rates?
I don't think they went that far. I mean, lowering is all relative. Lowering relative to what the costs are going to be 10, 15, 20 years down the road, one could say that. But the response to that question has been, there's obviously economies when you have more, you know, more, more folks paying into the, into the system. So it's still got to go through LAFCO. It's got to go through all kinds of entitlements. There's several different levels of review that have to occur, as we did, but. So I have continued, and many have, many of other members of the board and the cities represent also express similar concern, so I've asked that there be some level of check-in periodically as these, as these entitlements come forward, to make sure that we don't, you know, bite off more than we can chew.
Yeah, okay. All right, then.
On the sanitation base, you know, the, I was with Mayor Davis over the weekend for an event, and she noted that they had gotten an estimate, when they, when they first got their wastewater treatment order, just after we'd got, we would have gotten ours, it was a $40 million estimate project, which is about, I think, what ours was at the time, when we made the decision that $40 million was more than we, than we wanted to spend, and we wanted to charge in terms of rate increases to our residents. That figure then went to $100 million in Davis, then $150 million, it is today $250 million. I haven't built anything, but $250 million to comply with that wastewater order. And so, you know, it was, if they could, if they and Woodland could connect somehow to regional sanitation, they would do it in a heartbeat, for exactly the reasons that we did. But I think certainly, you know, whether the rates will, will decrease in an absolute way, what our rates might have been, had we not made this, that decision.
That's true.
I mean, they would be through the roof and still going, so.
Right. Yeah, no, every time I go to the meeting, I'm reminded of how good of a decision that was on our part to, to join, no question about. Oh, and I think the other part, in response to your question, Bill, the, they would obviously have to pay everything up to the point of connection, so all of these, all the.
In essence, we sort of did the same thing.
Right.
Except, I mean, West Sacramento is in a little different situation, though, and that was because they really had to come through here. It wasn't a question of, I mean, this was really the easiest and the most economical and, and all of the other things, because it was going to go down 21st Street. So, you know, that, that was a big plus. It's a big thing for us. I mean, I guess my advice would be to continue to monitor like you're doing, but I mean, still, at the same time, I mean, one of the things that I'll be concerned, or one of the things that I would be concerned with is, is I'd like to make sure that, that, I mean, we all know sewer rates are going to, you know, they're going to gradually increase because of all of the new regulations and all of the things that come down, and, and as time goes on, people are hired, people get pay raises, I mean, so there's, it's a business, and, and there are incremental increases that, that go along with the treatment of sewer. Even if it's spread over a long time, though, if other people are coming in, it could, I don't care if it's 10 cents. You know, I mean, it's something that is going to sort of make it just a little bit more palatable to us, and make it more palatable to all of the people within that, that district to allow other people to come in.
Yeah, yeah. It's a concern. And then also, so then, unrelated, a different meeting, the executive committee for the universal preschool system met, and just, just to let the council know, there is a job announcement that's been released for the, it's the director of our, of our universal preschool system here in West Sacramento. It's an hourly position with the city, based on our existing budget, so we had to essentially stretch out our budget over two years. So it's not a perfect funding opportunity, but I think it's enough to recruit, at least at this point, we've expressed, well, we've gotten a lot of good interest for the position, so it's been advertised. And I suspect if anybody's interested in it, it's on our website. Carol, is that where the position's listed? Yeah?
That's correct, and the final filing date is tomorrow.
Oh, okay, so it's coming up quick, but so far, we have a lot of good applications, so.
Yesterday, a couple of months ago, I think, reported that Senator, Senator Boxer was in, was visiting West Sacramento and had an extensive conversation and a tour of what's now the Bridge District, and that at the end of that tour, she recommended that we pursue funding with the Economic Development Administration at the federal level. They came to town yesterday. The, the regional person for EDA was here yesterday to do that tour, and Ms. Kantarski participated in it as well, but I just wanted to close the, close that loop. Hopefully, it will, will pay off. It's not, they don't have, they don't have, you know, tens of billions of dollars, but they have more money than they had before, and so they came here yesterday and were hosted at Riley Field, and then took a tour of the district, so we're hopeful that something might pan out there. And then I think, as everybody saw, coming into the meeting today, we are hosting downstairs the, the fifth and final of the regional workshops for the Central Valley Flood, Flood Plan Management Plan that the state is putting together. And so this is the workshop for the entire Lower Sacramento Valley. They're here both because we have a great facility and we're central, but also because of our, our work and our reputation and what's happening here with respect to flood protection. So Mr. Panos, Mr. Bissett, and others have been participating in that, and we did the welcome this morning. But it's, it's good to have them here and reminded them that we can only provide, assure their safety for, for so long if we don't get our money for, for the levy improvements. That is going to lead to a whole set of other activities and workshops and planning sessions and what have you, so it's not as though it's going to produce a plan by the end of tonight downstairs, but it's a necessary step. All right, item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions. We have none of those this evening, so we're going to proceed to item 2, which is a presentation of a proclamation honoring, honoring, I'm sorry, proclamation recognizing Juneteenth, a celebration of emancipation from slavery. Mr. Johansson moves the proclamation. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Mr. Beers. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and opposed, hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. I've asked council member Johansson to present the resolution on behalf of the city council. We have a delegation from the, from the Juneteenth celebration. Welcome.
Okay, this is, we're glad to give this proclamation to the city council to recognize Juneteenth. Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. It started in Galveston, Texas in 1960, or 1865, and Texas actually observes June 19th as an official holiday. Today, Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and emphasizes education and achievement. It is a day and a week, and in some areas, a month. It's marked with celebration, guest speakers, picnics, family gatherings, and is a time for reflection and rejoicing, and it's time for assessment, self-improvement, and planning for the future. So this is a proclamation of the West Sacramento City Council recognizing Juneteenth, a celebration of the emancipation of slavery, whereas Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, in the state of Texas, Major General Gordon Granger read General Order Number Three to the people of Galveston. The order stated that "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free." And African-Americans in Texas began calling the event "Juneteenth," Emancipation Day, and named it "Juneteenth." And whereas Juneteenth has been declared a legal holiday in Texas and celebrated throughout the United States, whereas this event is presented to honor and remember African-Americans who were residents of Yolo County in the early 1850s. Whereas this event is presented to honor and remember African-Americans who have been employed by state, county, and city governments. Whereas this event is presented to honor and remember African-Americans who have served on city boards and commissions. And whereas a local celebration for Juneteenth will take place on June 13th, 2009, at John Ferns Park in Woodland. Now therefore be proclaimed, the West Sacramento City Council does hereby recognize Juneteenth in West Sacramento and encourages citizens to participate in meaningful activities that recognize contributions of African-Americans, in hopes that the day's celebration on June 13th will be successful. Thank you very much. And Jack Jackson will talk.
On behalf of the African-American Association and the Consolidated Juneteenth Committee, I'd like to thank the city council and the residents of West Sacramento for this presentation. I am originally from Texas, so I know where this started. It's about 60 miles from my hometown, so we did celebrate this every year in Texas. And again, I want to thank you for the presentation, resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just take one moment of your time?
You want to take a picture?
Oh, you can take my pictures. But I'm not born in Texas. I'm born in Woodland, California, 62 years ago. An African-American, very proud of a mama who came here in the, well, her great-grandmother in the 1800s as a part of a pioneering family in Yolo County. So what I want to do is talk about, just briefly, to thank you, number one, for acknowledging the presence of the African-Americans in Yolo County, West Sacramento, Woodland, Davis, Dunigan, and the likes. And I'd like to say that we've been here, and we've learned together, we've grown together, black, white, brown. And I want to make sure that we're, you all feel welcome and invited to this event, that we're about to celebrate together. And I particularly want to speak directly to my brown brothers and sisters here that are struggling in whatever, because we all got babies. We all got lives, we all got a lot of love that we need to share with one another, so that as we come together, to, to deal with the, the ills of society in this 2000-whatever year we're in right now, my mama, I give you my heart. I have three sons. And so when we talk about how we work together as communities, this is one of the ways. We celebrate together, and then we get back and we roll up our sleeves with one another, and we come together and we figure out what it will take to work together, to whatever. and we come together and we figure out what it will take to work together to whatever, clean up, build up, you know, mama. So thank you for your acknowledgement, thank you for your proclamation, and I pray that I'll be able to come back one day and see you again because in celebration of all of us of Yolo County, we were all here from the very beginning. God bless you.
All right, thank you.
Couldn't help it, I had to do that, I'm sorry, man, ain't no way I could not do that. You're giving it, so you better give it, what did I say, black, white, and brown? Yeah. Yeah, because I'm not a good.
All right, thank you. With that, we're going to proceed to our consent agenda, which is items 3 through 7. Are there any items on consent that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for separate comment or question?
Question 6.
All right, then, item 6 is consideration of a park maintenance funding agreement with Calsters. Mr. Kristof.
Hi, Maureen, how are you?
As of now, we don't have an agreement, right? Okay, so are they going to pay their fair share?
Yes.
As we're, as we're proceeding through this?
Yeah.
Or what the projected fair share is?
We've already given them an invoice, they've already drafted the check.
Okay.
It's just waiting for your action tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johansson.
Maureen, just a quick question. Just, just a question on the estimate, now, this is for the, basically from the Tower Street Bridge to the High Street Bridge.
Correct.
And in the budget, it's $113,000, that's going to be allocated 25% to this project. In the budget, there's a full-time worker for just that stretch, or is it just a play card to get an estimate?
Actually, according to our parks maintenance people, that there is the equivalent of a full-time park maintenance person dedicated to.
For just that section, so when we flesh out the rest of the riverfront toward the fulcrum property and all that, there's going to be another one or two people to maintain that as well?
I have to ask the park maintenance folks, but I would imagine that, you know, if, if we have a similar level of improvement in that much more area, that we're going to see more costs.
Okay, thanks.
All right, then, that concludes the comments on the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Move consent.
The move by Mr. Kristof, and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Beers, no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted. Item 8 is a community development block grant, CDBG public hearing to consider Resolution 09-40 and 09-44 authorizing submission of an application for CDBG funding and matching funds for the grant. Funding priorities for 2009-10, Resolution 09-41 authorizing a transfer of CDBG program income and guidelines for the Mobile Home Park Improvement Program. Ms. Kintarsky.
Senior Program Manager Louise Collis. I'm sorry, Senior Program Manager Louise Collis will make the initial presentation. Mr. Mayor.
We're here asking the council to conduct a public hearing to receive public comments on four projects or programs related to the community development block grant funding that the city receives through the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development. CDBG funding must be used to address one of three national objectives, CDBG funding does come from HUD, from the national government. The first is the primary objective, which is to benefit low-income households, targeted income group households, as we call them, and those incomes are adjusted by family size. For example, a four-person household limit would be $58,100 annually. However, the other two objectives are elimination of slums and blighting influences and urgent needs, and urgent needs are defined generally as unexpected disasters such as flood or earthquake. If the council is amenable, I would like to take these four items and, and give a brief overview and then ask for questions before I go on to the next item, if that'd be, okay. First of all, we have an application for 2009, 2010 Economic Development Planning and Technical Assistance Funding. It's known as PTA funding, Planning and Technical Assistance Funding, there is a notice of funding availability that has been issued, the city is eligible to apply for up to $70,000 for planning studies leading to a CDBG-eligible project or program that would create or retain jobs for the targeted income households. The staff recommendation for this is to submit an application for the full $70,000 for a study that would lead to the creation of a business resource center, and this would be to develop a public-private partnership, providing support and resources for our business community. It would consist of a survey of business needs, a survey of existing resources, and then creation of a plan for bringing these together, and also to gather in resources that aren't currently available locally to support our business community. The Economic Development Advisory Commission met last night and approved this recommendation. They did have a comment that they wanted forwarded along to the City Council, and that was, they wanted to see that this plan also include a financial plan for long-term sustainability of the center. Economic Development Coordinator Diane Richards is available if you have specific questions regarding this project.
Mr. Johansson.
Basically, am I reading this right, that what was originally planned for this grant, but we weren't able to obtain because of the timing of our housing certification, housing element certification? We were originally going to go for a farmer's market and a P-bid, and that's being scrapped now in favor of this resource center? Am I reading?
No, no, we did submit the farmer's market and the planned, the P-bid applications, but because when we submitted them, our housing element was out of compliance and under HCD review, by the time we got in compliance, they had already awarded all the funding. So this is basically a second round within the same fiscal year.
So we can't reapply for these two?
We could. We could apply for those two, however, staff's recommendation is to do a different activity primarily because the, the chamber has taken the initiative to get the farmer's market planning off the ground, and the city has provided some redevelopment agency funds to help with that, since we did not get the planning study. This application goes in this summer, and the funds would probably be available around January, and by that time, the, the majority of the planning for the farmer's market is anticipated to be completed, because they plan to open next spring. And then for the P-bid, we just felt that this was not a good economic environment to start doing additional assessments on our businesses.
Yeah, I think, you know, my concern is that we're, West Capital Avenue is going to be coming online here pretty quick, and a lot of this is timing, it's probably not the end of the world to maybe defer the P-bid until the street's in and we have more activity there. But the farmer's market, I was unsure, but I would, I would agree with EDAC as well on the resource center, just to see a little bit more about this, how it's going to be paid for, what is the long-term sustainability in it, and really what it is, because really, the staff report doesn't have a whole lot on what this is about.
Well, yeah, Diane is here, if you have more specific questions, she can, she can help flesh that out.
I don't know if it's appropriate to just ask questions, I mean, I'd like a description of what it is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What this is, is a way of expanding the services that the city staff and the chamber now provide and other businesses provide to startup businesses, to existing businesses, businesses that are struggling, so it's a way to redistribute economic development activity. Right now, it's city staff and chamber and SBDC folks, we have to send people across the river to the SBDC center, and we know that partnership was already begun with the chamber and with local business leaders and bankers and other providers in the community. They're out there helping businesses now, but they're doing it in an informal way, and it's, it's effective, but this would be one way to make it a dedicated plan, to get those partners on board in a committed way, to expand the services that we have to offer, and basically to get more hands on economic development, to get more people involved in the business community as volunteers. This approach has worked successfully in many other communities, some communities have started micro enterprise centers, some have just started with a basic business assistance center, but the idea is that you need a formal structure to keep that, those services flowing and to get the commitment of, you know, the Rotary Club and the Chamber and the business volunteers, training members, and we have a lot of partners that are interested in providing those services, but we have no dedicated place to do that. You know, right now, a business that needs help or wants guidance and counseling, they come and talk to us, we have two city staff people, we send them to the chamber, they have a whole cadre of volunteers, they have dedicated staff, and then we have to send them to a small business development center that provides good service, but it's out of the city, so it's another way of providing those services right here in West Sacramento, and another way that we, we could be a self-contained community and provide these services. And data has shown that providing technical assistance and business assistance to, to those businesses pays off in increased revenues, increased job creation, and sales tax generation. So it's a system that works, and it's a matter of, we need to go have a conversation with Los Rios, the chamber, all of our partners in the community, we've got a great opportunity here with Los Rios and the facilities that are being built, Los Rios is in the business of business assistance at their small business development center, so we've begun that process now, and we have it happening a little bit with the counseling that we have going on in the chamber's office. The chamber was great to dedicate an office so that this counselor could come and provide this business assistance to our citizens, to our businesses, and let's face it, the job creation is not coming from businesses with more than 500 employees now, we've all read the statistics, 98% of the new job creation is coming from businesses less than 500 employees, and those are the people we need to reach. We get calls every, every day from citizens in town that have a business, want to start a business, we do what we can and we send them on their way. So this would be a way to look, to formalize that process, get the commitment, and hopefully get a nucleus of a center somewhere, to start of a center that could be built upon.
And, and so this is, this is just a planning and technical assistance grant, so you're going to be looking at what this organization is, with the financing, you know, the operational structure, and basically fleshing it out through the use of this money? With, yeah, and then you'll come back to us with what the, what it's going to look like, what the funding requirements, what the city's contribution's going to be, that type of thing?
I believe that you will see the grant application that we prepare to submit before it's actually submitted. No? Okay. Okay, then. I don't know, really, the, the grant is to plan the center, is to go out and have those conversations, try to get those partners on board, get them to commit their services on a more continuing basis. The businesses are out there helping out right now, we have it going on, we just need to get a plan, develop it, and see if we can make it, get some traction.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem Beers.
I was also going to ask about the farmer's market, so I understand that a little bit better, and the P-bid, we probably can put that off. I guess my bigger problem with this is that, and maybe it's restricted by the, the processes, the planning, if you, if you came and said, we want to advertise for a contract with somebody to start delivering a centralized service, I'd be a lot more excited, because I don't think we need a year of planning. The answers are, everybody, you just explained to yourself, we already know all of the answers, what we don't have is a central place that somebody can go to and then do all the, the work to bring that together. I've been on two business walks, so we've already surveyed a huge number of businesses in the, in the community, the chamber, no, it, it just seems to me that we, maybe we could do this concurrently, I mean, hang out the shingle, get somebody out there, hang up the shingle saying, here's where you go, and then start feeding it in and let it, you know, evolve with some actual products as opposed to a sequential process where we do some planning and then start looking for money that doesn't exist. Maybe the, the value would be more immediate in terms of sustainability if we already saw it was delivering a product. The product here is going to be a report, and at the end of, of the way I read this, at the end of spending $70,000, we'll have a report and a new funding problem, you know, if, if the way it goes, so.
Okay, maybe.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I would much, I'd be much more excited about something that said, we're going to centralize right now, use an office at the chamber, or wherever the heck we need to use office, I'm not sure that office space is a problem lately, and we're going to contract with somebody to open up and for these hours, provide all of the answers to any business in this community immediately, because it's not a, a lack of answers, it's a centralization issue about where can somebody essentially one-stop. So, I don't know, that's the way I'm reading it, and so I'm just giving you my feedback.
Well, we don't, we don't have a, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
For the purposes of planning grant, that would not be eligible, so.
And I, I started off by saying that could be restricted by the grant, but I'm, I'm still concerned that we're going to spend a whole, whole bunch of money planning, and I don't know that we have an issue of planning so much as we have an issue of resources on how to make this work, so that's, that's my thoughts.
Louise, let me ask you about an alternative, so we've had conversations with the chamber and local businesses around issues related to the cost of doing business today, so, and, the city's efficiencies and over-the-counter services and other sorts of things that either add costs or can reduce costs, not, not solely around impact fees, which is the most common discussion that we have here, but, but around a much broader range. Is it, and, and it's a question of going through, it's kind of in the way that we did with respect to development in the Bridge District, just going through every, you know, every nook and cranny, what costs, what, what do we need it to cost, what services do we not want to provide, what do we want to add on, and, you know, it's very laborious, but it is planning work. It's, I mean, it's not hiring people to do something, it is, I mean, it's hiring, it's, it's bringing folks on to help us with that. Is it possible, is this a potential funding source to go through that kind of an effort, to do a sort of top-to-bottom assessment of this, of, of, of city activities and, and fees and processes and procedures to make sure that we contribute to, directly contribute to the success of, of, of starting or growing or sustaining a business in our community?
We actually did discuss something like that. The problem is, CDBG funds cannot be used to supplant something that the city is already responsible for, and I think that it would be very difficult to, to draw a line between our responsibility for reasonable fees or, or justifying our fees and a study that shows that we should reduce our fees to support our businesses. I'm, I'm, I think that, I, I think it would be very difficult to make that qualify.
I'd like to comment.
But we, but this is something we are, we already do some of this, as Diane has said eight or nine times, we already have people come in and they talk to our economic development staff, we're already providing this service, just not very, we can't do it in a comprehensive way, but we already do this too, and that's not supplanting?
It's not necessarily the city's responsibility as a government to do that, that's something we do, but what this grant would do would be to form a stronger collaboration and bring in other partners that are maybe not participating fully at this time. I know that the chamber has discussed this, and they're here to, to talk about how they feel about it, so I, I, I think that this is in support of a coalition that's bigger than the city, and so that, I, I don't think that that would be considered the city's responsibility to handle.
Okay, but, and your, so your professional advice is that it would not be an eligible activity for us to?
I, I don't think it would, I, I don't think we would be able to, to make that fly. I did discuss this with our CDBG rep, and they said it would be very difficult to draw that line.
The cost of doing business study, we did discuss that as a, it is not an eligible activity for CDBG, even though there is interest in having that data, and that is something the city's responsible for, but businesses don't just need the costs to be lower, in fact, they need, they need advice, they need technical assistance and counseling.
I, I don't, I don't want to get into a back and forth about how great this proposal is, I'm trying to, this is, I mean, this is another, with respect to the cost of doing business, we could, at the end of the study period, we could conceivably adopt a set of recommendations immediately and have it go to work, whereas this proposal, as has been discussed, and we spent a lot of time on a, on a planning process, and then we have to figure out how to pay for it and organize it, and, you know, we're, we're 18 months out from today, which is not, you know, not trivial, but it's not the, it's not the economic needs of the moment, so it's, it's not just a question of one versus the other, but this cost of doing business issue is an important one, and we don't have the, we don't have the discretionary resources, the organizational slack to be able to devote a lot of resources to, to it directly. In the Bridge District, we had the support of the developers who helped contribute to pay for that work, but we don't have that on a citywide basis, and I'm trying to find resources to do that.
That's part of the conversation that we want to have in, in this process with the study, is we want to go talk to those partners and see what they're willing to provide, see what they want to do, if they have space, if they have funds, funds that we can tap into to get a dedicated center, because right now, we have one office in the chamber, and you can't, you can't provide those services in one office in the chamber.
There, there would probably be allowance under this grant to have that to be a component of the larger business center idea as far as looking at the, under the survey of business needs and where businesses are, what businesses are struggling with, and what entrepreneurs are seeing as impediments to them getting new businesses off the ground. are seeing as impediments to them getting new businesses off the ground or to expanding their existing businesses. A study based on what the impediments are and what resources are available to reduce those would be eligible, but a study of the, directly of the city's fees, just from the city's perspective, would not.
Right, okay. And I'm not just obsessing about fees. I mean, in fact, I think fees are probably, given the fiscal situation of all of us, fees are not likely to be the, you know, the easy one anyway, but looking, your way of framing it in terms of the broader set of impediments, which could include public sector impediments, but not necessarily limited at, I think makes some, could make, you know, could make some sense. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I'd like to chime in on that as well. I don't think it's so much the cost issue, but it's more the efficiency issue. And I think it would be nice in the context of this to be able to include some type of analysis of that, because the impediment could be just a hassle factor, it's not necessarily the cost, but it's, how long does it take to do a certain, certain activity? How easy is to get the permit? What's the timeframe, that kind of thing? So it's not, we're not talking about, you know, a direct, what is the cost of a permit? It's more, what is the cost of the business to apply for that permit?
This is a good point, we're taking a breath. Denise, was it this component of this item that you wanted to speak on? Great, then this would be a great time. Denise Seals? Oh, I guess so, this is a public hearing, isn't it? So let's open a public hearing on this item. Denise Seals, pardon? Yes, thank you.
Good evening, America Baldwin, council members. I am here this evening on behalf of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce to encourage council action, giving priority to the 2009-2010 Economic Development Planning and Technical Assistant Grant Application for a study leading to the creation of a Business Resource Center. The significant participation in response of local business owners to the very organic quarterly business support seminars that have been coordinated by the West Sacramento Chamber, City of West Sacramento, and our economic development partners that offer currently resources and tools to help local businesses prosper through the economic reset clearly demonstrates a need for a collaborative, comprehensive business assistance program. On another aspect of the same grant application process, the Chamber would also encourage a prioritization of the Economic Enterprise Grant Application in order to replenish the business revolving loan fund. This program has demonstrated success in our community, creating jobs and much-needed services. While it's true, Councilmember Beers, that a, that this is a planning application, it's also very likely that in the process of planning, we will move forward with quarterly seminars and the SBDC and the Chamber offices and all the collaborative economic development projects that we're working on now and probably a half a dozen more in the next 18 months. It's very likely that we'll garner information as we get through the planning process that will make us more effective in those things that we're already doing and give us an opportunity to take a look at the potential and opportunity for a bigger, more coordinated and defined Business Resource Center. A business-friendly environment offers potential for resources for every business, and these grant applications provide the grease to move the wheels of progress in our business community. But I'm happy to answering questions that you might have.
Mayor President Beers?
I don't have a question as much as I just, I'm against the product being a report.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
And so if it's, if it's something that's going to have some deliverables immediately and then for the long term, I'm much, much happy to hear that, but...
It would be a great...
We get a lot of reports.
Right, and the Chamber would certainly agree that it's about outcomes. It's, but I really, I would think that as we move forward, as we're planning and doing the kind of research that neither one of the organizations have had the funds to help support, that we're going to get information that's going to be, make us more effective that we're already doing and give us opportunities for further success in this area.
Thank you, Ms. Seals.
Thank you.
Well, just on this particular item, if we could prioritize the component that you just described, or the way that you framed it, Louise, as part of the work that's occurring here, I would definitely be supportive of doing that. I think that is a key component of it. For me, I'm less interested in the whole, "Let's bring the SBDC services over here directly" because people shouldn't have to go across the river. That's, if that's the barrier, you know, driving over, across the river, especially once we have the college connection here, SBDC provides really good services, but I don't think, I don't feel like we should be prioritizing replicating those here unless we're not getting good service across the river. When we, when we can, if we can instead deal with some of these issues around efficiencies and the cost of doing business and the business climate that's available to everyone. So I could be supportive of this, of this proposal, but for me, it needs to address those issues, the systemic issues that businesses face in our community as well as the assistant, the direct assistance that we might be able to connect them to, through these resources. We know it's necessary, I mean, the workshop that the Chamber and Mr. Biagis and others participated in, I mean, you know, the revelations about resources that were out there that were unknown to folks in the business community were substantial. I mean, they weren't little tiny programs, they were big, big, big dollar items. So there's definitely potential here, but if we can use the opportunity to also address some of these systemic issues more broadly, I think it would be, it would make a stronger contribution to the success of our small businesses in town.
If we, if we, if we limit it to an analysis of the conditions, we're only eligible for $35,000.
No, no, I'm saying as part of this...
But as part of the overall thing, if it's leading to an actual project, that's a physical project, a location, project located somewhere like a center, then we're eligible for $70,000. And the center could, doesn't necessarily have to be an actual location, it could be housed within any of the organizations that are partnerships, so, but we could easily write the grant that way.
Okay, great. Mr. Biagis?
So I can, if I could follow up. So, yeah, because the form, I think that the Chamber and the city coordinated with, or coordinated on a couple of months ago, clearly demonstrated, there's, I mean, overnight, over 100 businesses showed up, striving for information and learned about a tremendous amount of resources. So, I mean, I think that the premise makes good sense, but to Councilmember Beers's point, I'm wondering, because I see this happening where the studies are good studies, but they draw a conclusion that's so expensive, the ultimate, you know, implementation is elusive because of, it just, it says, "Well, here's what you need, and here's the cost, and congratulations." So maybe, and I don't know how you do this, but there ought to be an element of their, of the proposal which includes different versions of, or different components that we could implement that don't have the Cadillac version. I mean, if there are, if there are, you know, midsteps that can be taken to say, "Okay, here's how you can affect, you know, here's how you can affect your ultimate goal at a less, you know, less costly, in a less costly way." Because there are a lot of resources already here through, and was demonstrated organically, put together by a handful of people in this community that brought it together, that provided a tremendous service overnight. And so this notion that somehow a $70,000 study might, in a crazy way, come up with a plan that's going to cost, you know, $100,000 to implement is a little bit, at this point in time, is just probably going to be not very helpful. So I guess what I'm saying is, if we can ask for in terms, or different measures, or different levels of implementation that are less costly up to the, you know, the Pinot version, to the Cadillac version, and in between, I think it might be helpful.
All right, do you want to proceed to the second item?
Thank you. Second item is our annual public hearing to receive public comment on funding priorities for 2009-2010 CDBG applications. Usually, we do this at the beginning of the fiscal year in July or August, but the CDBG program is issuing some funding applications earlier than expected, and so we're coming to you a bit earlier. For, the state divides CDBG into two components. First is general allocation, and the second is economic development. Economic development, our funding must be used for projects that create or retain jobs for our targeted income group households. General allocation is basically any other CDBG eligible purpose, housing rehab, home buyer assistance, community facilities, public services, infrastructure for housing development. Those are some of the more common activities. The state, I believe since we wrote this staff report, has issued a three, an $800,000 general allocation notice. So we are considering an application, and the recommendation for general allocation funding for this year from the Housing Advisory Commission and from staff is to recommend prioritizing infrastructure for affordable housing development, energy efficiency programs, and residential rehab that includes energy efficiency improvements. It should also be noted under the general allocation side that the state received an extra allocation of CDBG through the Recovery Act of the, from February, and the CDBGR, it's called CDBG Recovery Act. These projects must be shovel-ready within 120 days, and HUD has established priorities for these, for this money, that these projects stimulate the economy through infrastructure, energy efficiency, expanding educational opportunities, or access to health care. So we feel that the general allocation recommendations also would position us well if CDBGR money becomes available.
Louise, where would you go with that money?
Where would I go?
Right. Where would, what would the recommendations be? Because I think in the near future, I mean, I don't know where the state is going to be now as far as, I mean, we've put a lot of our eggs in the basket as far as the Triangle area or the area up there, and I'm not so sure where all of that is in today's market, especially because the state of California, I'm not sure is going to be, I think eventually that the infrastructure bonds will come through, prop one C. But if they don't come through and we continue to have to have all this lag time, where else would you put those funds?
Well, energy efficiency would be, housing rehab, which would be existing homes, not the new development such as the Triangle. But there, we could also do energy efficiency for multifamily projects.
Could we do energy efficiency for business?
That would come under your economic development component and would have to create jobs. So it's really difficult to create job...
How about saved jobs?
Pardon?
How about saved jobs?
If, you would have to show that that business saved or created, saved jobs that would otherwise be lost or created new jobs.
CNS, I'm thinking CNS, is what I'm thinking.
If we, CNS is one thing that we have looked at for CDBG Recovery Act money. The state has not yet made a decision whether they will issue a separate NOFA for that money, or whether they will go back to 2008 applications that did not get funded and see if they have sufficient applications there that they could fund. So we don't know for sure if there's going to be a CDBGR NOFA, but there might be, and we want to be ready for it. CNS would be an economic development activity, and we could, we've already talked to them about that, I think we could make a case for job retention there. So that would be a potential, but I don't know if they'll, I don't know if CDBGR money, they'll throw it into the economic development side. They haven't said yet.
All right, any questions or comments on this second component? All right, is next Mobile Home Park?
Well, for economic development, I haven't gotten to those yet.
Okay.
Economic development are, as I said before, projects that create or retain jobs for low-income households. It's required that the project create at least one job for every $35,000 expended. The city has done two of these projects in the past year. One was Portside Montessori, and the other was United Bakery. Between the two, we'll probably be creating close to 40 jobs. The, and then there are two ways to apply for that money. One is over-the-counter, and that's what we did for United Bakery, where we applied for one large grant for one dedicated project. And the other is for the Economic Enterprise Fund, and Economic Enterprise Fund money is, would replenish the city's existing business revolving loan fund, which has gotten down to about, why don't I say, $61,000, $62,000. And right now, we have applications for more than that, that we are working on. So we're out of money in the business loan fund if those are approved. So the recommendation from staff and from the Economic Development Advisory Commission is to apply for Economic Enterprise Funds this year to replenish the revolving loan fund, and if a strong applicant is identified, to apply for an over-the-counter grant. And any questions on those? And then I'll go on to the planning and technical assistance. We discussed the current planning and technical assistance application, which is for economic development side only. The state may issue a planning and technical assistance NOFA for general allocation activities in the fall, and they might issue another one for economic development this time next spring. So we need recommendations for the coming fiscal year for prioritization. The staff recommendation is that if the general allocation side of the house issues a planning and technical assistance NOFA, priority be given to parks planning for Bright and Broderick and for, or for projects that would provide energy efficiency improvement programs. And the Bright and Broderick parks planning is a direct result of the Bright and Broderick visioning from last summer. One of the, absolutely the top comment that we heard when we did that was, "We want better parks and amenities for our children and for our families to enjoy in Bright and Broderick." And so that's, came from the visioning process. If another round of planning and technical assistance comes out, we're going to stick with our current priority to studies leading to the creation of a Business Resource Center. If we don't get funded this time, we would go for another round for that. Any questions on the economic development recommendations or planning and technical assistance? Okay. All right, number three. Guidelines for Mobile Home Park Improvement Program. The Mobile Home Park Improvement Program was developed under the guidance of the city's Mobile Home Park Task Force, and it was approved by the council on April 15, 2009. The city received a 2008 CDBG grant recently to provide loans to mobile home park owners for infrastructure improvements, so it improved the quality of life, health, and safety for the residents. Owners must agree to the management procedures established by the Mobile Home Park Improvement Program and would be required to offer long-term leases to their residents to ensure reasonable rent increases over a minimum of five years. For this particular program, these guidelines, program manager Rick Toft is available for specific questions.
No, he just left. Mr. Biagis?
Okay, item number four. Transfer of $67,000 from the Multifamily Acquisition and Rehabilitation Loan Fund to the Business Expansion and Retention Loan Fund. As mentioned earlier, we have two applications under review. We feel like that they have a strong chance of being approved by our Loan Advisory Committee. However, there is not sufficient funds at this time in the business loan fund, so we ask a transfer of funds from the Multifamily Acquisition Rehab Fund. We do not have any applications at this time under review for multifamily, and we do have need to spend down funds before the end of the fiscal year, or we would have to return some of these funds to HCD.
Is that enough of a transfer?
That would be enough to fund the two applications currently under review, plus provide the allowable program admin, yes. The two applications are, one's for $70,000 and one's for $20,000, so there's $90,000 worth of applications.
Okay, Mayor President Beers?
Well, kind of the same question. If we don't have anything pending in the one, would we want to just do one transfer and put more money into the, to the business component, or you can do that anytime, I guess?
This is just one transfer, but it requires that it be publicly noticed in a public hearing and a city council approval.
So instead of 67,000, you put 100,000, you've got more money?
Yes, the city council could put more in there. That's absolutely up to the council's preference.
Well, what would be the staff's, I mean, the staff's recommendation looks like it's just taking care of these two applications?
Yes.
And we don't expect any more in the timeframe, so that's all we need?
We, we have some others that have expressed interest. I haven't received any other actual applications, so I don't know how, how strong of interest those are, if this, and I don't know how much those are for. So I would hesitate to guess at this point how much more we would need. If the council wanted to move more money over, we'll be very happy to go out and try and move it, but we would also have the option of coming back to council under another public hearing to transfer funds again if need be.
It just... It just, that takes time, another meeting. And if you don't have anything pending in the other and you do have something pending, that was really kind of my, my question is if we've got something percolating in the business side, do we want to have more funds for that right now?
Yeah, it makes sense to me to, I mean, to, to, I mean, if we, sometimes we'll have these where we need to move as quickly as possible. If, if it's clear we have some funding in the business loan fund, if we, if we don't have any multifamily acquisitions pending and we don't see any on the horizon during this fiscal year, keeping a hundred, uh, a hundred and forty thousand dollars or whatever the amount is there, while having close to a zero balance, once we fund all these other ones out of the business fund, it seems like we could afford to move some more now and, and make it clear that we, we, you know, we have some capacity.
We're open for business.
That we're open, yes, the bank is open for business for folks who want to, uh, grow or expand.
We, we have not actively marketed the business revolving loan fund, uh, for a number of years because there wasn't much money in the revolving loan fund. Um, and the loans that we have done have gone, come primarily because they came to our economic development staff and they talked to them and said, you know, "We're having trouble. Help us out." And in the process of working with them, they said, "Hey, you know, this is probably going to be a good CDBG loan," and then they would apply. Um, if we had additional funds in that, in that, um, pot of money, um, we, we would probably go out and do a bit more marketing.
And, I mean, that we don't really anticipate, do we any, any surprise multifamily, big multifamily projects coming our way during the, during the, the program income period, right?
I don't have any that I'm, I'm aware of at this point. No.
Mr. Mayor, I think that, uh, we could probably add an additional, say sixty thousand or seventy thousand, um, to that figure. Um, I might also say that the revolving loan fund for the, um, economic development side will be receiving, uh, regular amortized payments from some of the existing loans. So, uh, that would also add to that number and that would be sufficient, I believe, to, um, be able to advertise that and, um, help having some, uh, resources for the, um, business assistance.
We'd add seventy thousand?
If we add seventy thousand. And thank God, Mr. Topberg is not here to remind everybody that I wanted to kill this program about seventeen times and then now trying to double its funding. Uh, okay. So Mr. Beers is suggesting, uh, increasing the, the transfer by seventy thousand dollars. I certainly support, would support doing that. So is there further discussion by the council on, on that item? Is there any objection to, to increasing the transfer by that amount?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Do each one of those need to, to open a public hearing or one public hearing for everything? Okay?
It said, "Open a public hearing to receive comments on all four," so.
Okay, okay.
And we don't have any other requests to speak, but because it is a public hearing, is anyone else wish to address the council on item eight? Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion by the council. If not, is there a motion?
Uh, motion to, motion for the recommended action, uh, including increasing item four by seventy thousand.
And with the direction that was given on item one as well?
And the direction.
Okay. Or is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye and a opposed or a none. That motion carries unanimously. Item nine is a public hearing to consider adoption of a program income reuse plan for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program and the city manager is requesting that we continue the public hearing to July eighth, two thousand and nine. Without objection, that will be the order. Item ten is continued public hearing and first reading of ordinance zero-nine dash one regarding the River Two Rayleigh's Landing Development Agreement and ordinance zero-nine dash two amending the Plan Development Thirty Standards, adoption of resolution zero-nine dash two permitting minor deviations to the Washington Specific Plan and Design Review and Transportation System Management Plan Approval.
Senator Roy will present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldin and members of the city council. The city council is quite familiar with the Rayleigh's Landing Project and the River Two, uh, project, uh, as well, since we've done two public workshops on it. The background and history of this project is laid out in the staff report, so I'll keep my presentation brief and concise. When the development agreements and planning entitlements were approved three years ago, River Two was described as a seventeen-story, one-hundred-ninety-foot structure with one-hundred-and-fifty multifamily residential units and structured parking for approximately three hundred vehicles. Uh, the city did not have a specific project at, at that time, uh, when the project, uh, when the entitlements were approved for the, uh, entire Rayleigh's Landing, um, project. Fairfield Development is proposing to develop the River Two project site as a twenty-four-story, two-hundred-and-sixty-foot condominium tower with one-hundred-and-fifty condominium units, including two live-work units, structured parking for two-hundred-and-forty vehicles and a promenade, including eight-hundred-and-eighty square feet of retail buildings. Project implementation requires an amendment to development agreement that would revise the project description, an amendment to Plan Development Thirty that would increase the maximum density from eighty units per gross acre to two-hundred-and-three units to the acre, an amendment to PD Thirty and a minor deviation to the Washington Specific Plan that would increase the maximum floor area ratio from one-point-five and one respectively to seven-point-seven-three. Since the design and site layout were not known at the time of project approval, the development agreement requires design review approval by the city council and also approval of Transportation Systems Management Plan. Since all of the necessary findings can be made for this project, staff is recommending that the city council conduct a public hearing, waive the first reading and read by title number only ordinance zero-nine dash one amending the River Two Rayleigh's Landing Development Agreement, waive the first reading and read by title number only ordinance zero-nine dash two amending the Plan Development Thirty Standards, adopt resolution zero-nine dash two permitting minor deviations to the Washington Specific Plan, approve the design review and the Transportation Systems Management Plan and certify that the city council has reviewed and considered the addendum to the Environmental Impact Report prepared for the Rayleigh's Landing project and approves the addendum to the EIR and that the addendum to the ARR reflects the independent judgment of the city as lead agency under CEQA and inform the public that the second reading and adoption of ordinance zero-nine-one and ordinance zero-nine-two and approval of the Plan Development Permit are scheduled for June seventeen, two thousand and nine. Available to answer any questions that the, the plant, planning commission, I'm sorry, city council may have and also if you have any questions regarding or need any clarifications regarding the TSM plan, the city's transportation program specialist is available to answer as well and the developer is also in the audience.
All right. Are there questions for staff at this time?
No, I do. Mr. Kristoff. Sandra, there's a small piece of property that is between the levee and between, and, and the, uh, the parking structure that is a cul-de-sac. And we have access to the River Walk. People can park there and have access to the River Walk. If I read this correctly, it's taking that away, right?
It's taking, it's on the vacant lot there. But you can't, you've never been able really to cross that property to get to the.
No, we've never been able to cross the property, but people have parked in the, on the, uh, in the cul-de-sac area, walked up the steps or, or whatever. And so I have to assume that, is that piece of property going away? For, for public access?
No.
No.
It's not changing at all.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, then the applicant is here, so invite Ed McCoy from Fairfield Residential. Forward. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I'm Ed McCoy.
Shoot it twice.
It's at the base of the microphone.
Hello?
Okay.
Excuse me. On the left. Oh, look at this. Well, that's quite an entrance. Thanks again. I'm Ed McCoy. Uh, again, it's my pleasure to be here. Uh, this has been the culmination of about three years' worth of work and I want to thank your staff, uh, for all their efforts. They've done a great job working with us. And I also want to thank the council for your patience over these, uh, last couple of years. We, um, obviously stumbled out of the gates on this project. I think, uh, we had a little bit of trouble understanding your vision for the River Walk and I believe that the project that's presented to you this evening and that you're under consideration with, uh, will help implement the vision for the River Walk for the city of West Sacramento. So we're pleased to be here. Uh, just have a very brief, uh, couple of slides to go through just to let everybody in the audience and those on television who might be watching understand what's coming to West Sacramento. Uh, I believe this will be another landmark building in the series that you have out there with the Calistros Building, which is a magnificent building. And even the Ziggurat, I think, is a very unique building and is, uh, a landmark in and of itself. So we're very proud to be part of that stretch of the River Walk. Go ahead and switch the slide. As you can see, the, the intent is to have a, a tower rather than a short squad building, which was the original, uh, design of the approval at seventeen stories. Uh, this helps open view corridors and also creates a better rhythm of buildings. And I'm not an architect, but that's what the architect told me to say. So it's, it's a much better rhythm of buildings as your eye glances across the landscape. Again, the materials, we, we have varied materials. We have, uh, building facade elevation changes along the front edge, so we'll get nice shadows as the sun moves across, uh, the sky. And each of the building sides has a different and a unique look, so I think that's important. You, you don't get the same building look from every angle. Go ahead. Again, we'll just shoot through these. This is a real issue that we got stuck with. Uh, our original plan had a very residential interface, excuse me, residential interface with the River Walk. Uh, we had, uh, landscaped setbacks and we had a little bitty, uh, mobile kiosk, if you will, for retail use. I went back to the drawing board. Go ahead. Next slide. This is the, uh, the cross-section where we have the, the units here and then we had the, the landscape setback and really cut us off from the River Walk. It didn't, it didn't provide the interface that the city's looking for. We went back and we took out all of the landscaping that was, uh, included in this portion. We added two permanent structures on each end, retail structures and we changed.
Can I just, the, your laser pointer does not actually get to our screens?
I'm sorry.
So as you're, just as you're, it's helpful for the audience for sure, but if you could, when you, when you, when you say over in this area here, if you could describe where you're, where you're, where you're locating ours.
Will do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Uh, the, the two residential structures are on each end of the, of the River Walk, uh, where we are along on each end of the building. Uh, additionally, each end of the building will have two, a, a live-work unit. So the ground floor will have, uh, retail or office or maybe a beautician or something along those lines. Uh, and the intent here is to bookend this space, this public space, that's going to provide for, uh, an activity area for people to come, sit down, relax, have a cup of coffee, maybe rent a bicycle from one of the, uh, retail buildings. But it also provides for expansion opportunities. So if we are successful, if the synergy does grow within this area as intended by the city council, we have the ability to continue to increase the, the commercial retail space in that area. This is more of a blow-up of it. You can see the live-work on each end of the building as well as the two retail buildings and then the space in between, which can be used for multiple, uh, multiple uses and, uh, public, uh, events. Here's a artist rendition and, uh, you can see the, the retail building in the forefront. Uh, you can see the banner. We're going to have banners. We'll have, uh, umbrellas. Again, to create a sense of activity. So people who enter the River Walk from either end will see something happening and will say, "Hey, what's happening down there? Let's go check it out." Again, creating people flowing back and forth. Uh, here's another artist rendering as well. Again, you can see the umbrellas, the seating areas where people can maybe have a sandwich, uh, enjoy the river, enjoy the weather. Uh, with that, I am here to answer any questions. Uh, this is an exciting project for us and we do respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Well, let me open the public hearing on item ten. We don't have any requests to speak other than Mr. McCoy who just spoke. Um, is anyone else wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and then return to the council for further questions and discussion. So, Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I just, I, I think I mentioned this at, um, one of the last meetings involving this project, but, um, when, when, when we put in the north-south, uh, streetcar line, um, I just wanted to make sure that, um, we've got the ability to, um, um, fund that thing with all projects in the Washington neighborhood in particular. I know this, this project is putting in a portion of the, uh, fifty thousand dollars toward the streetcar feasibility study and a maximum, I think, uh, ten or twelve thousand dollars per year, uh, for operations, but I just wanted to make sure that, um, that when, when we do look at a, a possible extension of the streetcar, that all properties in this area are going to be at the table at that time. Is that, am I understanding correct?
I'll let Greta address that.
Yes, that is correct. Um, currently, when the project initially would come online, if there isn't a CFD formed, there are guidelines within the plan that call out what their contribution would be, but at the time that a CFD would be formed, they would then, that would supplant that their contribution that's made initially. So, and that would help go towards transit operations for the streetcar.
Thank you.
So, uh, Greta, the, the staff report on page three in the conversation about the, the Transportation Systems Management Plan says the project would be required to contribute either at fair share under the new CFD or up to a maximum of thirty-five hundred dollars annually, whichever is less. Is, is that?
I was trying to describe what, what was in the old, um, draft. There was a previous draft.
Oh, I see.
Two drafts have been prepared, so I was trying to.
So we fixed that already. We went, not done that before. Okay, gotcha. Okay, so, and, and is there a requirement for the, um, for the developer to support? The C, I mean, the CFD doesn't, only happens with an affirmative vote by the property owners. So is there, is there an agreement or a requirement that the developer would support such a district as we've had in some other instances?
It's in the DA. Okay.
It is in the DA.
Maureen is relating to that it is in the DA.
Okay, and is that, what's, is there a, a scope in terms of, because, you know, when we, when we worked in the DA, we were, uh, you know, we hadn't really evolved our concept of the, of the two-line streetcar very far, so I don't know, is there, is there a limited scope of the district in, that's contemplated in the DA or whatever the necessary transit services are that we judge necessary to achieve these, um, the, the TSM reductions in trips?
The condition stated in the DA's, um, state that the, uh, development will participate in whatever CFD is formed to, um, support whatever form of regional transportation system is put in place there. So it could be the initial streetcar line, a north-south streetcar line, or some other, um, mode of, um, of regional transportation system that we'd hook into there. Um, the, the only condition is that, um, the CFD be, um, fair and equitable and distributed over a number of properties and they participate like everybody else does.
And if the CFD were to form after, I, I mean, if the project were to go to construction and sell all the, the units, then the project no longer gets to vote, right? Then, then it's the individual.
That's the individual property owners.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, you know, we, we'd hope to include, that, that they would include in their white paper and their sale documents, disclosure about the, um, potential for, uh, transportation CFD.
Well, couldn't it be more than just a, a disclosure? Couldn't, couldn't it be a condition?
Um, I'm going to have to ask Mr. Murphy if, if we can.
You have to ask the question again. I didn't understand it.
Um, the, the development agreement requires the developer to participate in a CFD for regional transportation. Would that obligation be extended to buyers of condominium units?
Not unless we put it in the CCNRs.
So how do we do that?
We can require, uh, require the developer to do so.
It's the same thing. You're just transferring.
Right, are there, are there, I mean, that makes sense to me. I see a lot of people nodding, but it is. Just on a, okay, so maybe when we do with the motion, we can incorporate that. Uh, just one other question. Um, this will, this potentially will be the first, um, you know, residential, uh, section within this, within this stretch of the River Walk. Um, and it, and it may precede a lot of daily, high-energy, high-intensity, high-traffic activities on the River Walk. And I, I think it's important that we avoid having folks move in and then, um, be surprised that there's lots of people on the River Walk every day and that they, they had assumed that it would be sort of their, a semi-private park. And, um, even though it might be more effective to market it as a semi-private park, so is there, can we be assured in some way that, you know, the buyers will, will get those same slides that show all those people, uh, on the River Walk? Cause it is, that's, I think, you know, it is a potential danger, um, that we are, you know, that we experience in other, other places when we build new neighborhoods, that the first movers don't necessarily appreciate the full vision of what's occurring. Uh, it may not have been shared with them during the sales process and then when we, when we try to proceed with a plan, we're unable, it's, it becomes difficult to do so because the first residents see it as, as a private area.
Yeah, just, just to follow up on that, it, you know, there's, uh, the vision is there'll be concerts, there'll be fairs, there's going to be a lot of activity in, in that park. It's, it's not, it's not a, uh, a park just for the grass. It's, it's going to be interactive. So I think it just needs to be. So I think it just needs to be very clear in disclosure documents for people that are purchasing there that, you know, that that's part of the thing so that they don't come to the council, you know, a week after there and say, gee, there's a concert till 10 o'clock, I can't sleep, you know. So I mean, just, I think it's more just making sure everyone understands what the whole environment's supposed to be.
All right, so is there a mechanism by which we can accomplish that, or?
We believe it.
Yeah, if not tonight, I would absolutely encourage that as well because I think as we go down this path, it's going to get more and more difficult and things will get lost in the transition. Sales office personnel change and all of a sudden it becomes a completely different conversation. I know we're all sitting here, the players tonight are in agreement on it, but yeah, it would be very helpful. I would certainly encourage that to be a part of how we move forward.
Hey, Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Your concerns are valid. People who generally live in these types of buildings understand that they're in a more urban setting. But what we've done in the past in more suburban, where we've built next to maybe where farms and whatnot, you put it right to farm disclosures and whatnot. But we would certainly welcome and support a condition that requires us to provide staff with full disclosure statements prior to any sales.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Further questions or discussion? All right, then, is there a motion on item ten? And we have a substitute version that's at our desks, memorandum from Ms. White. Mayor Portembeers.
Well, I'd be happy to make the motion, but I just wanted to compliment the applicant and city staff. This has come a long way and it's exciting to see the project evolve into something that is much more compatible with the River Alive vision that we've been trying to sell. So I think it's, you know, an exceptional-looking project and so I'd be happy to move the agenda item as amended in the memo that was sent to our desk and then to require that the CCNRs be, or whatever appropriate amendment is necessary to make sure that owners realize they have to participate in the future district and then also disclosure of activities or that district, what life in that district would be like.
All right, it's been moved by Mayor Portembeers and seconded by Mr. Johansson. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. And thanks for the summary, Mr. Beers. It's also a reflection, it's one of the first projects that directly incorporates the changes based on our modernization of the parking standards. It's one of the key reasons why this becomes possible to achieve. Very good, thank you. All right, item eleven is consideration of various budget actions and the budget schedule. Mr. Ross?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Last month, the council held a workshop where we discussed the various key issues surrounding the budget. We focused at that point on the general fund. Tonight, we have several items that we want you to consider and then we'll talk a bit about the revised schedule for the budget. The first item will be the CIP and capital budget. This is a more comprehensive process than we've had in the past, at least the recent past, and so we're allocating a fair portion of the presentation this evening to that item. And then we will review the Measure K priorities. We are asking that you adopt a resolution for the, as the redevelopment agency, supporting contribution of debt service money from the redevelopment to pay for a portion of the Station 45 debt service. And then we're going to ask you to entertain two continuing resolutions so that the, we formalize a process of authorizing spending in the new fiscal year in advance of a budget. We'll be coming back to you on the eighth with budget policies. Let me back up. On the six, on the seventeenth of June, we'll be coming back with side letters and other personnel items. I'd like to be the first to report that we have reached agreement with all the bargaining units at this point. We reached agreement today with the police department, with the police association, and so we'll be delivering side letters next week. And then on the, and other personnel items, including the authorized personnel list. And then on the eighth, we will be reviewing with you some revised budget policies. And then we're anticipating adoption of the budget on the fifteenth of July. So with that, if there are no questions at this point, I'd turn it over to Mr. Panos, who will conduct the discussion on the capital improvement program.
Okay, thank you, Toby. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Bill Panos, the capital facilities manager. And, you know, one of the things that I have the pleasure of doing in my work is to take a look at the CIP periodically. Tonight, what we'd like to do is spend some time talking with you about the capital improvement plan and the biennial capital budget, talk to you a little bit about our expenses on CIP over time, talk to you a little bit about our funding sources that we use for capital improvement programs, talk to you a little bit about the projects that we are proposing to move forward to you for consideration tonight. And then at the end of the presentation, to talk a little bit about Measure K and how it relates to transportation funding. Before I get started, I wanted to really thank the staff in every city department who participated in this. They've been remarkable and they've worked very hard to try and develop a number of projects that fit the council's strategic priorities, fit the needs of the community as a whole and the citizenry, as we've heard through all of their work and their jobs and the services they perform to try and put together a good package of projects, a good package of projects that meet also our funding. I also want to thank my boss here, Steve Patek. I think this might be his last council meeting, but he's been a great mentor over the last couple of years, my teacher. He's the person that taught me this CIP and so I owe a lot to him, not only for that, but for all of his support over the last couple of years, as we all do. So let me get started. I'll walk through these slides as quickly as I can and we'll see how it goes. So let's talk about capital expense first. We looked at capital expense over a number of years. And this is actually a slide that I brought to you two years ago, where we looked at the planned expenses in the capital program and then the actual expenses in the capital program. What we found is that, is that we were actually planning a greater level of expense than we were actually experiencing in any given year. In fact, if I take this back farther to '03, '04, '02, '03, and back, there is always a gap between what we planned to spend and what we actually spent. I guess that's a good thing because you actually don't want to, you don't want to have actual expenses above your planned expenses. So, but there is this ongoing gap. And I made a commitment to you, I think the last time that we met, two years ago, that we would try and align our planned expenses to our actual expenses. And we're starting to do that now, as you can see by this chart. You also see that our planned expenses rise significantly in the 2009, '10, '10, '11 year. And if we overlay at least the beginnings of our capital funding trend, our actual funding for capital programs is rising considerably. And I want to talk about that because there are some things that are obvious about that and there's some things that are not so obvious about that. Okay? So a little bit about planned expense versus actual. Let me move on to funding and I'll get back to the line that we, that dark line that was the funding line here in a second. But to do that, I want to build a chart with you. This is a workshop, so we'll do a little work. The capital, the capital program funding comes from a number of different sources. It's like streams that come into a lake. And there's a variety of different streams. They have a different amount of water in them. They have different kinds of water and they move into this lake and we basically take our resources from that lake and use them for capital projects. Here is what we'll call, for the sake of the discussion, foundational funding. This is traditional funding that's used for infrastructure, not only in this community, but in communities around the country. Taxes and assessments, these are things like Measure K, like other kinds of assessments that we have. Flood assessments and other things, user fees. These are things that are typical to a water bill or a sewer bill or those kinds of use, fee-for-use types of activities. And then there's other sources. And in our community, we do money transfers, like we transfer to the general fund, general fund to capital projects and other kinds of funding sources that we might get. This constitutes three of our funding streams, but there are more. And over the last few years, what we have done is we have looked at impact fees and utilized the impact fees that we've been collecting from development for this purpose. And over the years, those impact fees for the purpose of capital programs has declined. And it continues to decline and we expect it not to move from this declination for at least a few years. And you've heard that before. I think you've heard that in the operating budget a few, a bit ago in one of your meetings. This is just a reflection of that as well. A fifth funding stream that we use is bonds. Now, when we started to see the decline in the impact fees, our folks over in finance, by the way, they've done a great job of helping us put all of this together, not just these charts, but also the CIP in general, they've done a great job. But what they've done is, they've said, okay, the impact fees are declining, let's pick up our bonds to try and make sure that we have enough money to do the programs that we have been authorized to go, and the projects that we've been authorized to do. They picked that up and they've been selling bonds. But again, bonds are, in a way, like impact fees. It's not, unless you have, and impact fees, unless you have the development, you don't have the fees. With bonds, you need to have a bond market to be able to sell those bonds over a long period of time. And it's not an infinite capacity. It's a finite capacity. And so they'll sell those for a while, but that won't pay the bill forever. So what we've done over the last couple of years is with the council's permission and the council's direction, we've gone after other kinds of funding. And this last funding that we'll look at now is really state and federal funding. I think I was in a council meeting, at least a couple of, I think, maybe a couple of council meetings ago, where I think the, an item came forward about the government affairs contractor, new government affairs contractor funding. And one of the observations was, hey, can you come back and show us how these kinds of investments are returning to us dollars? In terms of, you know, the investment, we invest in a contractor that does government affairs, they go out and help us with finding money, what kind of, what kind of results that we get? Well, this is a bit of that. This is the kind of results that we get from doing, among other things, government affairs and being active in the state legislature, being active in state agencies, being active at the national level with the Army Corps of Engineers, with the funding agencies in Congress and with our congressional leaders. And so we've been able to, and I think in almost all departments, but primarily port the bridge district and certainly flood, we have been able to generate a great deal of money, probably more money than we have in all the other years combined to be able to do infrastructure projects. But if you, if you look at this too, you would think that, mm, I wonder if that's sustainable over time? Well, it's certainly taken up the slack. There are some, there are some consequences to this as well, as I think was pointed out earlier in the meeting. Right now with the state budget crisis, we are at their whim. This money is to us, this money has been promised to us and in most cases, we have contracted for that money. The question is whether or not that money is going to come forward now with the state budget crisis. And if there was a federal crisis of a similar nature, whether that would come forward on the federal side. This is mostly state money, by the way. When we add all of these funding sources together, that's where that line came from that I was talking about earlier. When we add all of them together, our trend looks very, very positive. Our trend looks positive because impact fees were there, then bonds, now state, mostly state money. Our foundational funding sources, though, are relatively flat and have been flat for the last few years. When I look at those foundational funding sources against expense, you know, those, there's a difference. There's a gap. And most of that gap's been made up by, you know, the impact fees, the bonds, and now the state funding. So that's really all I wanted to talk about with regards to funding, just an observation about that. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about what we proposed in terms of the capital program over the next two years. Remember, this is a CIP, a five-year CIP, and then we have a two-year capital budget. So let's look at what we proposed. We have, and by the way, when we talk about, I met with staff yesterday and when we talk about the capital program, we often talk about authorization. And for us, it's not funding, it's an authority to spend money in a given period of time on a certain project. The question of whether or not we have the money to do that is another question altogether. But we have authority for certain projects and that authority travels from year to year, budget to budget, especially with capital. And so our available authorization, our remaining authorization from previous council actions, about $57 million. We take that into this year and count it as something that we can consider as part of the capital program put before you tonight. And then we looked at requests. We took requests from all of the different departments, all of the staff, and we are requesting another $88 million in '09, '10 and another $75 million in '10, '11 for projects. This is only about 113 total projects, which is fewer projects than we've had in a number of years. So fewer projects, higher dollars. It's reflective of the state and federal funding that we've been going after. Higher dollar, fewer projects. You can see in the shaded area, just a little bit below that, that previous available authorization, previous requests weren't that large, but the project count was way up, 275 in the last biennial budget, biennial capital budget. So we are reducing the number of projects to match the funding we have. Let me keep going. So, you know, when we looked at the number of projects coming forward, if you look at the very bottom of this chart to the left, you see 275, so about 275 projects from the previous year. When we started this process, we had about 243 projects being requested by staff. But we didn't have enough money for all of that, out of the available sources. And so we went through a process by which we kept some, we delayed some, and we closed some. And I'll get into how we went about doing that in a second. Of those that we kept, about 113, 75 are projects that were previously authorized and are open now, and 38 of them are new projects. We delayed about 51 projects and I'll, again, define delay in a second. It's just putting it off for a couple of years. And we closed about 79 projects. Again, this closing of projects, I'll define in a little bit, but it's mostly because projects were complete. Work's been done and so we can get them off our books and we want to do that, if we can. So we started, last year was 275. We started this year with 243. We got it down to 113 to match funding. That's, that's a lot of work on staff's part to try and get projects to match needs and to match funding. When we looked at projects to keep or delay or close, we looked at a number of different policy considerations, policy principles, that in part you guys had previously approved in the last biennial budget, capital budget. Things like their compliance with the strategic plan and master plans, the city's management agenda, that they're part of a comprehensive program of infrastructure, that they're economically and environmentally sustainable. Economically, we look at that as, you know, can we afford to maintain the thing that we're building? And can we finish the project, not just start it? And are they environmentally sustainable, another council priority? Do they increase the public safety, the quality of life or financial health of our city? Do they increase the capacity of our critical infrastructure? Do they enhance our regulatory or contractual compliance? One of the things that we allowed was, if a project was currently under contract, we weren't going to delay or close it. We had to finish that contract, so we needed to manage our contractual compliance. Does it enhance city productivity or operating efficiency? Does it help with our economic development goals? Whenever possible, could it be contracted locally? Could that project be contracted locally? And probably most important to the state and federal funding, can we leverage external funds from the investment in this project? We tried to consider all of these. A key project would be one that was immediate, needed to happen right away and was compliant with a number or all of these. A delay was really something that was less than immediate, that we could put off a little bit and may have partial compliance of one or more of these things. And then, you know, a close would be a project that's completed or not compliant. I can't think in the list that I looked at, I can't think of a non-compliant project at all. Most of them were projects that were completed or folks had found different funding sources for and weren't needing to do that project anymore, but I'll get into that. So what I wanted to do was, we had 51 total projects that were delayed, that is pushed off for two years. And I wanted to talk a bit about, about some of these projects, about a dozen or so of these projects and give you an opportunity to kind of hear, not only about the project, but hear what we were going to do with it and then maybe give us some feedback on them. Wayfinding signs, Wayfinding Sign Program is a great program. It's been going on for a number of years. We felt that that could be pushed off a little bit for the next couple of years. Again, these aren't closed, these are just delayed to help meet our funding needs. The residential traffic calming program, great program, been going on for years. We've hit the high. We've hit the high-risk areas, the words that we got, or the information we got back from staff was that we hit really the high-risk areas. We're still doing the project, but we could push it off for a little bit because the high-risk areas look good now, and we've gotten to most of them. The Jefferson and Merkley intersection, this is an intersection that I understand, before I got here, was, has a history, and has a history of a safety, public safety issue. Our transportation folks have been watching it and monitoring it, and the incidents of traffic accidents have gone down significantly in that area. They feel comfortable in pushing the Jefferson-Merkley modifications off for a couple of years. The Ship Canal Trails, they were linked to levy improvements along the Ship Canal, those levy improvements are not prepared yet, so the staff felt comfortable in pushing those off. The South River Road Bridge, for reasons that the council's fully aware of, is a little bit off. The design's actually complete, so we can move forward with it, but there's land acquisition and other linked development and linked transportation issues that can afford that project to be pushed off a bit. The US-50 Jefferson improvements, very similar to that, can be pushed off a bit. This is, this is an area that, again, is critical, but we can, I think we can push it off, in talking with Steve and others, we can push it off for a couple of years. The Sacramento River Crossing Broadway Bridge, very interesting project, as you know, a really important project, a complex project with our friends across the river. This actually is an interesting project because when we look at the CIP budget, we almost, it's like, it's a motion picture that we just take an image of. We take one snapshot of, and we give you what that image looks like. When we finished the, when we finished this about a month ago, this, this particular project had not moved in a little bit, and the staff felt that we could push at least the construction off and some of the other major design elements and others, because they were still talking about planning. From the, a month ago to now, the planning's actually picked up a little bit, in the sense that Sacramento is trying to move forward on it a little more. And so, we're actually going to be opening up another project, another project number that deals just with the planning components, and we'll push this project for the design construction out a bit. It's a fairly large project. So, this is one where, in a month, things change, and we need to be flexible to be able to comply with that. Southport Water Tank Development isn't ready for that yet, we can push that out a couple of years. The Jefferson Area Sewer Evaluation, this is a two-part project where, we're at a milestone now, where we've done the evaluation and some of the work. We can stop now for a couple of years and then finish up the work a little bit later. The Washington Area Monument, this is an interesting project that's been going on for a number of years, and it didn't quite get to all of the criteria, although we'd be happy to talk with the, you know, have the council give us some feedback on that. The view is that we can push it off for a couple of years if needed, but we really would like the council to weigh in on that. The Bridge District Water Tank, just the construction portion of it. We can do the design, and the design actually carries us for the next couple of years, and then do the construction. We had all of that cost shoved up into the first couple of years, we don't need that. So we actually stretched the project out appropriately, and worked with all of the staff, and they seem to think that, hey, they can, they can balance that project out, so design is in two years, and then construction happens in year three, year four. And then the last is Newport Grove Park, again, another park that was programmed for development, which has been slowed, and so that park won't be necessary for a number of years. These are a dozen or so examples of projects that we're delaying, of the 51 projects that we're proposing delay to the council, and I can, I can keep going and go on to the, to the closed projects, if you'd like me to.
Closed, are they finished projects?
I'm sorry?
The closed or the finished projects?
These are some examples, some are finished, some are not.
Oh, okay, finished or killed. Can you focus on the non-finished ones?
The non-finished ones?
Yeah.
Of the, of the closed?
Mm-hmm.
Sure. Let me go down through, let me look real quick. Finished, 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 finished. Citywide HVAC, I'm sorry? Yeah, let me get that. Citywide HVAC replacement, that's actually a great one. We, we were going to replace HVAC equipment throughout the city, we decided instead to just repair it, to continue to repair it, rather than replace those systems, to save money. In fact, we save an enormous amount of money by simply continuing to sort of repair. I asked our facilities folks, how long can we do that? And they said, eh, we could do that for about five more years, but we're going to have to replace these systems. But let's change our strategy from just, you know, not, not that it breaks for any reason, but it's old and we need to replace it, to let's keep it running for a little while longer to save money. That's a great example of staff coming up with a different approach to doing this that isn't, that really is repair as opposed to replacement. South Fiber Conduit, the Southport Fiber Conduit, there isn't really a demand down there. There was before, we thought it was going on, and so we've closed that project because that demand's not there. The Field of Dreams feasibility study, again, that one is out a ways, and so, we felt comfortable in proposing that we close that, and then, and then, and then if we need to reopen it, we can at a later time. And I think that, oh, let me talk about the Port Dock Hopper Dust Collector. Again, the port folks feel that they, they don't need that right now, and in fact, they could probably associate that with a tenant improvement, and not a CIP project like this, and so they would rather close it, and then if they have to reopen it later. Newport Security Gate was actually funded by a grant, and so this particular project and the way it was funded didn't need to move forward. Those are examples, I think, of the ones that aren't complete, the remainder have just simply been completed. And this is just an example of 79 projects. We didn't want to list them all, we wanted to give you a fairly well-rounded example of the kinds of projects that we were proposing to, to close. Let me keep going. So let's talk about the ones that we are going to do. The projects that we are going to do are significant. They're significant in a lot of different ways. This is a chart that integrates the, your strategic plan with the projects that we're going to move forward on. Flood Protection at $88 million, the Streetcar at 665-plus, West Capitol Avenue at almost $8 million, Bright Broderick at $2.4 million, which is mostly a road rehab project. The Police Station, we're starting to move on that in the design to move forward. We'll need some more money there later on, but now we're, we're moving forward with design as we speak. The Bridge District, $48, $49 million, a very large investment, second only to Flood. The Community Center completion at $10.3 million, Transit Center $3.6, Harbor Interchange at $36, $37 million, that's moving forward. And then the Port of Sacramento, the vast majority of that $11 million, $10 million of it is a state grant. It hits a lot of the policy agenda, hits most of the major projects. There's, I think, one it doesn't, but the rest of them, they hit fairly well. And so, we wanted to show you how the projects that we've kept are consistent with your strategic plan.
Bill, what's the plan on the Bridge District if Prop 1C monies do not come in?
Well, you know, there's, we have a large group of staff that are working on that project, and they're actually looking at, if we don't, what would be the contingency plan for if we don't? We're doing the same thing with the flood control projects. If for some reason, the state does not execute the agreements as they, as we have had them set up with, with the state, again, we're looking at how long can we cash flow? How long can we go? What level of activity? We're not completed with that yet, but we're working on contingency plans now.
So we can go from one reach, I mean, from two reaches to one reach?
You know, I'm not sure if it's, it's a lesser activity on reaches, EIPs, or if it's a focus on just the GRR for a while. You know, we haven't finished that evaluation, but we're in process. And actually, Toby was really good about early on asking us to get to contingencies, and we've been working on them for the last few weeks.
Okay.
Hard to tell, by the way, until we really figure out what's going on with the state. These are the types of projects. Generally, when we do capital, we like to organize them by type. Flood Control, 41 percent, Bid District, 19 percent, Transportation at 11, it's a little shallow, I wish it was a little bit more. Parking and Rec at 10, Utilities look, are good at 12, and Port, about 5 percent of the project types. This is nicely reflective of the council's priorities, I think, in terms of the ones that we've selected. This is a chart I used last year, I hope it's coming out clear, or two years ago, where it just sort of graphically showed where the projects are going to be. Symbols are, you know, the Le Corre's Transportation Project, Facilities, Flood Control, Sewer, et cetera, and then what it looks like in this next two years. It's a lot less, fewer projects, higher dollar value. And so, you can see a cluster around the Bridge District, that's where a lot of the activity's going on, and a number of flood control projects. The rest is a little shallow. You see Harbor Interchange there, we see the Police Station being worked on, we see the Community Center across the street. Other than that, it's, it's, it's a little thin. Oh, and the Road Rehab Project up in the Broad Broderick area. But other than that, it's a little thin, and that's just a reflection of the kinds of projects and the dollars that we have available. So, let me, let me spend a few minutes here talking about Measure K, because Measure K is a funding source that we use. And in fact, I think there's a really good presentation that the city manager is going to provide you after this. But I wanted to give you a sense of transportation in Measure K, and how those projects have been funded, and some decisions that we've had to at least work on and propose as we move forward in this, in this particular budget. When we look at Measure K revenues for transportation, and we do this revenue versus expense chart, the, the red line actually shows what we expected to have in revenue, and the blue line shows what actually came in in terms of Measure K revenue for transportation projects. Started a little slow, and then it builds, in '04-'05, it actually hits the mark and then starts to climb a bit. When we overlay our expenses onto that, it's, it's very interesting. The green line actually shows the total capital expense for transportation projects. The purple line shows the Measure K component of that. And so, the gap, by the way, is usually made up by other funding sources, like grants and things like that. But you see out in the '09, the '09, the 10, the 10, the 11, it really takes off, because we have a number of projects that we still need to complete, mostly road rehab projects throughout the city, that we plan on completing, but they, they're getting awful expensive, and, and we're having to make some decisions about bringing them back into a line with, with revenue. So when we, oop, I'm going to go back. Can I go back? Sorry? Roll back. Okay. They give me instruction here. Thank you. Thank you very much. So when we look at those, the projects, the Measure K funding versus the amount of projects that are out there, what we are proposing is to delay a number of Measure K transportation projects because the funding is simply not there. The Annual Slurry Seal Project at $400,000. The State Streets Pavement Rehabilitation Project that was planned for '9-10, $1.8 million. Northwestfield Riverside Center, again, '9-10, $2.6 million. Marshall Road, '10-'11 at $1.8, and then South River Road, south of the Barge Canal, pushing that off until 1/8, until we have money that's available. We'll actually exhaust all of the money for Measure K, for transportation projects this year and next year, and I'll, if we go through and reduce the number of projects, there's two more, Bright, Bright Broderick, oh no, Elkhorn Broderick Road Rehab Project will finish, and the Westmore Oaks Road Rehab Project will finish, and that'll be it. We won't have any more money after that, and these are after those. So we will, we will slow that work until such time that more Measure K money is made available. When we do that, we actually start to align expense to cost, to revenue, and, expense to revenue. And so, that looks like a better graph for us than another, one where we're, where we're outpacing our, our, our revenue that we're bringing in. This is a, looks like a healthier graph. So, I wanted to give you just a sense of the kinds of thinking that we go through with transportation projects in Measure K as sort of an introduction to, frankly, a lot more detailed discussion about Measure K revenue, and the base, capital, and, and all the expenses that are associated with that. So with that, I'll take whatever questions, observations, comments, instruction that the council would like to provide relative to how we're thinking about the capital program and how we're putting together the budget.
All right, are there questions for Mr. Panos with this? Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Bill, good presentation. I think it was clear and very well laid out. Just a quick question, the total cost of the project, what is that based on?
The total cost of the project?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at these schedules, there's, what, 25 pages of the detail of the, you know, for example, the Traffic Improvement Program, Traffic Model Update, you know, we've got a $376,000 figure in here. What, what is that, what are those numbers? Where are they from?
Past and, past expense and future obligation.
Okay, the question is, do these reflect a reevaluation of some of these contracts in, in light of today's market?
Well, the past expense is just in accounting, and then the, the future obligations, yes, we, we estimate these projects based on, all the staff do, based on their expertise as engineers or as project managers, and they give a general assessment. And in some cases, actually, we contract, to have contractors and consultants come in and give us estimates of those. So, the answer is, is generally yes, but not in all cases.
I guess the question is more, you know, capital improvement program, or budget, a couple of years back, would have had a cost associated with a certain improvement. Improvement's not done yet, so we have a cost that's carried forward now, but we can also achieve some cost savings by rebidding these things or renegotiating these, these contracts. And I just wanted to make sure that the costs here include consideration of that. Because part of the problem is that, I mean, we talked about impact fees, and one way you look at, adjusting impact fees is looking at the ultimate project cost, and to see if we can come in, you know, with a lesser cost for a particular project, a bridge, for example, or a major road improvement. Another issue would be if the level of service is reduced because of, you know, a new general plan or traffic study reduces the need. So, I just want to make sure that when we're looking at these costs, that we're looking at how they're funded, particularly in the impact fee arena, that we're also looking at realistically what these projects are going to cost in today's market, and not just based on the historical estimate that someone did, you know, five years ago. That, that's really the point.
Excellent point.
The annual adjustment to most of our impact fees is based on a construction cost index. And for most of my career, that's, maintenance gone up every year. In particular, for the, the traffic impact fee, it's based on a, an actual roads' construction cost index. And I think that in the next couple of years, for the first time, we're actually going to see that index
Fall.
Fall, and force the fees down. So there's some of that. Yeah, it's a good point.
But, I mean, there's, there are fewer than 10, of all the projects that you're proposing to move forward with, there are fewer than 10 that, that have a reduced budget, and, and most of those look like they're for reasons other than the bid climate. So, at what stage, and this is based on authorizations that we've, that we've given in prior CIPs and budgets that we've already seen, at what, at what stage does the bid climate get reflected in different cost estimates and budget requests?
You know, I think in a couple of different ways, the way that Mr. Patek just described, but also, when we go to bid and we put together the bid documents, you know, we'll have a more, you know, we'll have a closer estimate. When we go through design, we have a lot closer estimate on, you know, projects that require intensive design, we have a lot better estimate about, about how much things are going to cost, because we know what we're going to build. So, there are a number of steps before we get to the, the actual, you know, bidding process where we're able to adjust numbers and, and adjust them down if, if, if needed, based on a number of different factors, including, you know, value engineering and, and design and, and, and the bidding climate as we go forward. And then, by the way, we get surprised. Our, we go out for a bid, and we think it's, you know, $10, and it comes back to be eight, you know, or, or six, or seven, or something. That's been happening lately. We've underbid every project that we've been bidding this last year. Everyone has underbid. So, to different degrees, but they're all underbidding still, and that's, that's a unique environment. It's one of the reasons why you do capital when the economy's down, is you get great bids. So, so I think that there's a number of opportunities, Mr. Merritt, to have these numbers adjusted. Again, we're talking about an authorization to spend money on certain projects at certain times, rather than the actual cash that's going to go out. This is our best guess, given the photograph that we take of where we are in this flow of CIP.
But, okay, but, so, we get, we get surprised because it comes in at eight, we had budgeted 10, and the next one comes at six, we had budgeted eight, and, and, to be surprised seems like a useful response for the first five or six or seven or eight projects, but after a while, it seems like it ought to induce some sort of systemic change to our budgeting. All right, I mean, Caltrans has been reporting that they, they have seen an average of 30 percent, 30 to 35 percent lower than their engineer's estimates on their, on their bids coming in, and to ignore that, and when we're, when we're trying to do an overall budget of, of, of whatever this totals up to, $200-plus million, to ignore a systemic change in the bid climate in some, at least in some areas, that's, that could be of that magnitude, is, is a lot of money that's, we're not budgeting.
You're absolutely right, and I think we can, we'll go back and, and we can look back at the list again. We'll have the staff go back and, and look for those kinds of opportunities. Again, they've done that, but we'll do it again before we bring you back the final budget to make sure the numbers are as tight as possible. Also, remember that, let me just use the Harbor Boulevard, or the Harbor Interchange as an example, that project came under bid, and the savings that we're going to use, in part, will pay for all the landscape that we thought we were going to have to pay for, that just extends the reach of a project that was scoped down because we weren't able to do all the things we wanted to do.
And that, that is exactly my point, because we may decide that's not what we want to do.
Excellent.
Right, so, we may decide we still want, if, if the Harbor Project were fully city-funded, we may have decided, we want, we want the scaled-down project, we want to apply those may have decided, we wanna, we want the scaled-down project, we wanna apply those savings somewhere else. We don't get the chance to do that on a policy basis here, to set those project, inter-project priorities, to the extent that we just allow, that we just have them come in as the bids come in. So I mean, I'm not suggesting we spend a lot of time and money
No.
Re-engineering all these projects and, and producing new estimates, but it seems there ought to be something more systemic than, we'll see when the bids come in, as, as a, as a way to allow us to make the actual prioritization decisions.
Excellent point.
And the other question I had was the, because the impact fee conversation raises the flip side, that we're also seeing potential loss in funding from other sources like Prop 42. How are, how is that environment reflected in, in the CIP? Are we just, are we deferring that until it happens, or?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't had this situation hap, I mean, it's interesting. I was just thinking about the previous comment. We haven't had that situation where we're actually saving a bunch of money on our projects, and therefore we have to make choices, you know, come back and make choices about where we're gonna spend savings and if we're gonna spend them on the intended, you know, what we initially intended, and we can make those alterations, and I think it's a great suggestion. Same thing applies here, is that we've never really had the situation where, one, we've had, we've had so much obligation from state and federal entities that we had to be worried about the cash flow associated with those, but we're here, and we never really thought that we would be in a position where even, even in a normal budgeting environment, that we had all that coming in, that we, we would have the cash flow issue. But now in the environment where it may not come in, we're now just dealing with that in the last few months. And so it's a new thing for us, and it's, it's not, I would suggest to you that it's not probably as accurately reflected in this document as one would like, one we would like or, or you would like, because frankly, we just don't know yet what's gonna happen with those. We are, each one of the items that are in here that have state funding, we have a commitment or a contract that has been signed, or a commitment, a contract that's about to be signed, to obligate that money between us and the state, well, vice versa, the state is obligating it to us. Even in flood protection, the $69 million, we will finish by the, the goal with DWR and us, in fact, they're working on that now, is to finish by June 30th, all of the contracts that obligate that money to us. Whether that money now is then gonna come to us at the right time and in the right way is another issue, and it's, one of the experiences that we have now by dealing with state funding and federal funding, is this lack of accuracy about the cash flow as it comes in, and especially now in the economic environment. So it's not as accurate probably as you want it to be relative to that.
No, I get that. I was, I was actually more interested in the Prop 42, the allocation to the cities, not the, not the, not a, a project-specific element, but the proposal by the governor to steal, or by the legislative analyst to borrow, you know, the, the general allocation from Prop 42 to, to local agencies.
I can look into that.
So, I mean, for me, it raises that and the flip side of it, which is, we, we, you know, we spent a good chunk of the last six months responding to stimulus requests, fake stimulus requests, potential stimulus requests, lots of other things, that we need to have a, we need to have some sort of capital reserve that can, can both anticipate the, those sorts of negative effects, you know, like a Prop 42 sweep, but also that, that allows us to be, you know, if, if a project opportunity comes up and it's not in the set that we have, that we have some resources that are avail, that we have available in order to move on it, which we have, we have up to this point, in order to, to have been able to make that happen. So, which for me connects to this question about the bid environment. Because you know how it typically works, is a bid comes in under, and it's not like we lose the money, the money's still in the account, and so it's not like we're losing it. But what will happen is, you know, five months later, some other project, you know, Steve will come to us and say, we need to, we wanna raise the budget on this project, and we have savings, you know, that's left over from a couple of other projects that came in under. That's fine, but that's essentially a transfer of our responsibility for priority setting to the staff. Because we never have the chance to say, well, would we have, would we have applied the savings somewhere else? We only see the, we only see the savings when they're actually being proposed to be spent.
Yeah.
So that's, which is, which is of no consequence when it just happens as a, as a random effect, but when, when you start to see it as a
Pattern.
As a systemic pattern, you wanna be able to say, is that, and, and maybe all we do is, we do that to some extent and then say, that's our, that's our reserve for both opportunities and for potential takeaways, but that's, I think that's what I was trying to get at, based on the comments that Mr. Johansson raised.
Great comment.
Yeah, I, I think another piece of that is the contingency. Every project has a 10 to 15% contingency, but I never see whether we spend it or don't spend it. And it seems like those dollars need to be accounted for also in, in the same kind of discussion. Because 10% of $200 million is, is a lot of money. And, and, and I, and I recognize that frequently it is spent. I'm, I'm not suggesting
Yeah, they try to spend it as much as they can. They try really hard to spend that contingency if they can.
Do they?
Yeah, sure.
The contractors do. Not, not, we don't.
I was gonna say, should they?
Contractors definitely put a lot of pressure on these to spend.
Okay. Mr. Vegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So also, thank you, Bill. This is a great presentation. It's very helpful. I know you're trying to do something that we've not done before, and that's build this capital budget in a responsible way. The, the question, just two questions. The, just, the Washington area monument struck, it struck me odd in that I thought we had the money, I thought we had banked it. In fact, I thought we had already designed it, planned it, voted on it, and kinda had moved on. I had closed it in my mind. I, I thought it was a done deal, and I saw it taken off the list, so I'm not sure, understand what, what all happened there. I know we had the money in the bank for some time on that one. The Measure K transportation sales tax, your comment about we're not gonna finish what I thought we were gonna get pretty close to finishing, concerns me a little bit, and I, I wanna have that conversation, not tonight, obviously, but I think we need to be clear about what we can and cannot do. I'm, I'm glad we moved, we shifted some things around to make sure that Brighton Broderick got its fair share of the sales tax money that we had originally intended to go to that neighborhood. Your list here identifies several things that are gonna happen at the Elkhorn Broderick neighborhood, and I think we're getting to most of what we said we were going to do. Obviously, we, well, we ended up increasing the money there because we found that there were other needs with water replacement lines and all kinds of other stuff that we figured we may as well do, since we're gonna turn up the roads. I think it's a good presentation, it's helpful. I, are you finished with your presentation on this piece? Is that?
Yeah.
You are done? Okay.
On 11A.
Yeah, right. First portion of it. All right, great. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Portman Beers?
Yeah. Not to give you a big head, but this is a good presentation, it's a good way to communicate where we're going. I, I think for me, I would actually appreciate getting the closed into those that are completed and those that have been taken off the list. I mean, I can try and go through each one myself, but I'd rather
A full list?
Well, I'd rather, I'd rather you take the closed list and divide it into those that were actually completed versus those that we've just stopped, or we're not gonna do.
Sure.
And, and part of the reason I wanna do that, and I guess that leads into my second question, is I, I think that matching our, our current capital budget to your expenses to what we plan to do, that's right on, we should, we should be very realistic there. But the capital improvement plan used to have a lot of what we planned to do on the out-years. And so for, for example, the West, West Sac, or West Capitol Avenue project, which is through Jefferson, we've got that, you know, that funding.
We do.
But we're, we were always very active in wanting to see Jefferson to Secamore and whatever. I don't, unless I missed it, I don't see that in, in the capital improvement plan for the out-years. That, that, that component of the project, I don't, I don't see that. And I'm not, that could be, I can't find it, but it, it seems to me that we wanna show those kinds of projects that we would be actively trying to pursue funding if it, if it became available, that we, we wanna make sure that's on our radar screen. And so some of these closed projects, I'd like to just have an opportunity to review them specifically and, and make sure that, are they closed forever, or do we wanna just push them into out-year plant, for planning purposes? And, and maybe it's, it's there and I don't see it, but that was my concern.
You wanna? Go ahead.
Well, a number of the projects, the software we have does not end at the end of the five-year. It goes out another 10 years, and in many cases, particularly some of the Southport Park projects, they are still in the system, but we don't think we're gonna be able to do them within these five years. So they're out beyond the five-year dime horizon.
And, and And that could very well be, Steve, and, and I'm not even, you know, that, that could actually be the answer. I would just like a chance to help weigh in on that decision, you know, in terms of, because I, I think the West Capitol, the, the next phase from Jefferson to Secamore is an incredibly important project, and if it's not even in our five-year horizon, I wanna at least have a discussion at the council that that's, that we're all agreeing to that, because, you know, maybe, maybe that's the case, but I, if, if it's just not there, I wanna be able to have some discussion on why. And I, I actually, and, and it seems like a little bit of a small thing in, in some respects, but I actually have been looking forward to the Washington Monument project or the gateway at Third. I, I thought that was actually passed, it should be kind of in the authorized, I thought it was in the authorized column in that we were just waiting for a contract, so I was surprised to see that taken out. And for me, that's really a statement saying, you know, we're trying to see a why in the Broderick-Bright area, and, and so it, to me, it was more than just, you know, a, a streetscape kind of project, it was, it had more importance to that. So I, I would like to have further discussion on that one. Anyway, I, I understand a lot of you're saying, if I could get that breakout of, of the closed projects, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, just a quick. You talked about your, excuse me, you talked about, it seems like our water fund is a little bit out of balance. I don't know, I think the council may need to have a discussion about it, but I mean, one of the things that I thought of that we may be able to do, excuse me, to get it back in balance, and that is to delay the water meter program. If we can delay that water meter program, like we'll say the city of Sacramento has, or some other places, we may be able to get that back into balance, especially if the economic times turn well. And so I thought that that might be something that, I, I know it'll take council discussion, because council's gonna have to talk about that, but, I mean, I think that there's a way that we could certainly help that particular fund, and all we're doing is just running it out for another four years, five years, whatever it may be, whatever you think might be the appropriate period of time. And then one of the other things I saw in, in his, probably under, gonna be under Toby, but, under the Yolo Management Plan, we've got $4,500 to spend in 2009, and, and another $5,000 in 2011. What is that?
It's basically a funding for, the Yolo County Transit District is the congestion management planning agency for the county, and basically that covers staff time, working with the, the other entities in Yolo County.
So it covers our staff time?
Yes.
And we're paying for it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Then we're gonna open this up for public comment. We have one request, and that's by Denise Seals.
Thank you again for the opportunity for a little feedback. I'm a commissioner on the Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Commission, and just a little feedback for council as it relates to the Washington Monument and some of the feedback we've been hearing on the Arts Commission. This has been three or four years in the making, and period, three or, three or four times a year, we'll hear from residents in the neighborhood asking about status update, checking on the status of this monument. It's been moved, it's been moved again, it's been redesigned. The city has already spent $75,000, probably over $75,000 in, in design of the monument. It comes well within or under the $250,000 budgeted amount. The contract was awarded to a local business. It's, it's a beautiful amenity to the neighborhood, and as it's, it's right off the I Street page, and as it's been moved now, it, it also serves as kind of a gateway to all those new folks that'll be traveling up and down to the Riverwalk, to the developing Riverwalk. It's, it's clearly a public art landmark, but maybe, in fact, definitely more importantly, with the change in the location, it has potential to be a real community gathering point for folks in that neighborhood. We've been, from the Arts Commission's standpoint, we've been promising it, or talking about it, or updating folks for a while, and I think it's just, it's just really important that we're sensitive to the promises that we make to neighborhoods in the community, and it's important that we keep those promises. So, thank you.
Thank you. Where is that project on this list?
It's, it's
On the, on the five-year CIP? It would be under Fund
It's on page 15.
Let me just find the actual page.
Page 15 on the
It's under redevelopment, so it would be
15, then
Oh, Third and C Gateway.
Fund 292, page 15. Let me see if it's here.
52620.
We might have pulled it.
Now, Val never liked that project.
Yeah. So because it's, it's, the proposal is to delay it, we didn't show it here.
No, you showed it as 2011, didn't you?
Let me see.
Yes. 2011, 12.
Is it 52620, that code?
Yes, Third and C Gateway, sorry. Yeah, it shows it out at 11, 12, two years.
Because delayed projects are, are, they're all on this list, aren't they?
Yes.
Or, or unless they're closed.
Closed or not on here.
Closed or not on
Delayed should be on here.
Okay.
That's where I wrote it.
Okay. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I, I think I would agree with Councilmember Vegas and Beers on this, the Washington Monument. One of the, one of the things I've been looking at in this, the budget is, is what are improvements that would have a direct impact on what we're trying to do right now versus what potentially we could move forward? And for me, it's, you know, the efforts we're making on West Capitol Avenue to make sure that we've got follow-through there, that things are going as planned, we've got the community center and the library, and the Los Rios developed there, so we, we really have to follow through with the improvements there. On the Bridge District, we've got the issue of positioning ourselves when the market picks up again, so we don't drop the ball and, and delay something that would stop that from happening. And part of the whole issue of the, the Washington neighborhood and the Bridge, Bridge District is we need to enhance our front door, and that definitely would be enhancement of the front door. We've got stirs, people moving in here pretty quickly. I'd imagine there's gonna be a lot more sales activities in the Washington neighborhood, so we're gonna have more activity in that neighborhood, and we really need to do something with that neighborhood sooner rather than later. And I was under the impression, as, as seem to my fellow council members, that this was, this was our refund and we were good to go. And so I, I would really like to see this thing move forward too and not delayed.
Mr. Kristof?
I, I guess I would express a little bit of caution. I mean, we've just laid off six people, and, you know, quite frankly, laying off people's, I think, has a whole different connotation than, you know, completing a project. This project isn't dead. I mean, it's 11, 12, you know, and we just, I mean, I realize that we've continued to delay this project and delay this project, because I'm like the rest of you. I thought, I thought that they were getting ready to build an arch, or whatever the heck they were gonna build. I mean, I thought, you know, they, it was all getting ready to start, but, you know, for whatever reasons, it was, it was continuous delayed and, and this and that. But we've got some pretty serious issues going on with the city right now. And, I mean, I realize this isn't a huge sum of money, but this is, it's symbolic of, you know, of, of, of government spending and, and that sort of thing. And for me, it's, you know, people are more of a priority than, than some of these other things, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, that's just how I feel about it. I, I just raise some, some caution here, because once you start to go down this road, you know, it's other kinds of things. And, and then it, you know, a few thousand dollars here, and a million dollars here, and a million dollars here, and all of a sudden, you've got a lot of money. But, you know, and it takes it to get there, but that's just what I think.
Mr. Russ?
Just to give the council a sense of the status, this project has been bid, and we wanted to bring it back in the context of the capital improvement program. In the priority sitting, we determined that it, it should be deferred, but that is not a universal opinion.[1754.76] we wanted to bring it back in the context of the capital improvement program. In the priority sitting, we determined that it should be deferred, but that is not a universal opinion. There are certainly advocates on staff and in the neighborhood that would like to have this project go forward.
That's Val.
We need direction from the council.
I thought Val hated this project.
But Val's, you know, he's on the fence with it, but some of his staff. But, but we need direction, and if the direction is that you would like to complete that, you likely would see a contract in very short order, and we would figure out what to do, how to make up the money in the capital fund. If you determine that deferral is appropriate, then we have a capital improvement program that makes use of that. None of that money is programmed to go into operating. And so it's not that some of it couldn't, but that isn't what we're proposing. We're believing, we believe we're short in both operating and capital, and so we're not in the practice of shifting if we don't have to.
Do you know what it came, what the bid came in at?
About two-hundred-and-forty thousand? Two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand. Also would like to point out that since we've last talked to you, we've been able to modify our personnel issues. We had gotten additional retirements, and we won't actually be laying anybody off. We will be eliminating some positions, and people will be reassigned, but we actually won't be laying anybody off.
Congratulations.
I think, I mean, I agree with everyone. I think I come down finally on the, on Mr. Kristof's side, on the issue that's at hand. This is a project I'm very supportive of, for all the reasons that have been said. There's a lot of projects on this list that we are deferring that have been promised to neighborhoods, that will add value to different places in the community, ones that have major economic impacts in terms of the flow of people and goods and employees around the city. I mean, there's a lot of stuff on here that is very important. The South River Road Bridge being, you know, a good example of that, that serves, will serve tens of thousands of people on a daily basis in the community. There's a lot of stuff on this list that we're not able to do, and you've just indicated that we may need to step up on the Broadway Bridge, that you hadn't anticipated, you know, a month ago, with some amount of planning funding, which would probably be about the same as this project. I mean, it's not a trivial amount of money in the context of some of the projects that we're trying to do, so I'm certainly not opposed to it. It sounds like the council, a majority of council would like to accelerate it, and I'm not going to throw my body in front of it, but I do think we ought to be careful about doing too much of that, because there's probably fifty projects on this list that are very meritorious of being advanced if we could, but we just can't afford to do it. We just don't have the, we don't have the resources.
I mean, I would, you know, I would certainly be supportive of, you know, the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. I mean, for me, I guess it's just accelerating the project to two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, right in there. I mean, so, I mean, but that's where I would fall, because, I mean, I think it's, it's a nice project, but I mean, it's, to me, it's just not one that has the kind of seriousness that two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars can take care of.
Pretend Beers?
Yeah, I, I think we could all go through this list and come up with projects that are important. Out of two-hundred-and-twenty million dollars worth of projects, to only have two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars separating us isn't, isn't a major catastrophic event, so, I don't know. I think this project is more important symbolically than, than a lot of other projects, so I'd still like to see this one go forward.
And I concur.
Is there anything, anything further on the capital budget? Are you asking us to adopt it this evening?
No, no, not at all. This is a workshop and seeking your input, and frankly, your input was excellent, so thank you very much.
So when it comes back in terms of the additional information that Mr. Beers asked, format-wise, it is difficult to, because of the size of the type, to track the X's on the, on the far-right side with the actual words. If you could organize it so that the key projects are together, followed by the delayed projects, followed by the killed projects, followed by the finished projects, or some, you know, some way that would allow us to more easily see where the real policy choices are, the way that we used to when we, when we had the line on the CIP, so we knew what was below the line, what was above the line, and it was very clear where the choice point was. On a policy basis.
Yeah, and you know, the finished projects, one of the reasons I like to see that pulled out is because it's something we should celebrate. I mean, it's buried in something, and we don't actually get an opportunity to say, look, this, these are good things that have been done. I think it should be a list that we publish, you know, it's something that people should be proud of.
And I guess one of the things I'd like to have everybody at least think about, maybe brought back next week when I won't be here, but I mean, it's another story, is to delay the water meter installation. I mean, I think that there's an opportunity to save some money, and it's not really violating anything as far as state law goes, but I mean, as far as at least delaying it, there may be a way in which, you know, the economic conditions get a little bit better, and then we can, we can get back into it, but I mean, so at least it's a discussion I'd like the council to have to have, or like to have.
So will you bring back information about our legal and financial options with respect to that?
We can't.
Okay.
Yeah, because the paper, you know, not that that's, you know, a sign of accuracy, but Paper keeps talking about Sacramento, they don't have to have it done until twenty twenty-five.
Our's is a little earlier, but there's more time.
Pardon me?
Our's is a little earlier.
Yeah, I think it was two thousand and nineteen.
They got more time than we did?
They, they did.
They're a charter city, and it had different effects, but.
Okay.
Our deadline is twenty-twelve, and that's basically when we have the.
That's our deadline?
That's our deadline.
That's what I always thought, it was our deadline.
I thought we accelerated our deadline.
Well, we begun working on it, and so, but our deadline hasn't changed.
At least send a letter to Yamada, whoever it is, to see if we can have that delayed because of the economic times that all the cities are in.
Let us give you some options on that.
Why don't you turn it to two thousand and ten?
Hey, what am I going to say? They're going to take, they're going to take three million dollars anyway.
All right, eleven B, Measure K funding priority review?
If I could get one bit of clarification before we go into Measure K, I think I saw a majority favoring the entry statement, but I want to confirm that, because we're not, we're likely to go forward with that if you support it in advance of returning with the capital.
Yes, you definitely did see that.
Okay, thank you.
That's how I counted it.
The Washington Gateway Monument?
I wanted to give you some background on Measure K funding priorities, because it's been really six years since we've had an in-depth discussion of that. And we give you annually a scorecard of activities, and you've been able to track that through that whole period, but we haven't done.
Mr. Russ, is Steve back? Are you leaving for the night? Oh, okay. All right, so, never mind.
Now, don't let him get away. He's going to spend the whole meeting here if it's his laugh. Anyway, what I would like to do is go through both the base and the capital program briefly to talk about where we've been, and where we project going, and give the council an opportunity to determine whether that's the course you want to take, or whether you want to alter that course. And it's really nothing more than that. It, this isn't a raid on Measure K or anything like that. So if we could have the first slide. I think this is a useful slide, because it shows in general that we have either closely matched or just fallen below the expenditures of the entire amount of revenue we've received in the base revenue. The base, as you recall, is that ongoing obligation. Capital is the ten-year obligation, and we'll start out with the base discussion. The important line here, I think one that we often forget, is the green line. That's how much money we thought we were going to have. And you can see in all circumstances, we thought we were going to have more money than we've had to work with. And that results in patterns of spending that we initiated back in two thousand and three that reflected a notion that we were going to grow this revenue more quickly than we actually did. And when you do that, then you end up starting to get bigger percentages of the money, and when there are other categories that don't have immediate expenditures, you start to get a pattern there. So if we can go to the next slide. We, this basically shows the match of expenditures and revenues, and it's, it tracks very well. We've, we've basically spent the money we have. We have a little bit of extra money that we are programming, and so it's just a matter of, sometimes it takes a little time to program the money after you get it, but it follows very closely. Next. The allocations were reflected in the top chart here. You can see that the basic categories, the large categories were road maintenance and water rate reduction, and the medium categories were library and police and fire, and then the lower categories were parks and recreation and light rail. That's what you basically started with. But at the time you did it, you knew that there were no immediate calls on library revenue, and there were no immediate calls on light rail. And so what you see as a cumulative expenditure in the bottom table shows that in fact, we spent a good deal more on water and public safety, and to some degree, parks and recreation programs, and dramatically less in library and light rail. And next. The red numbers at the right show that basically how much more money or less money we're spending relative to that overall projected category. And we'll go on to the next slide and kind of, this is for nine, ten. It's the same pattern, the only difference here is that we're talking about actually having some library funding, so that that red number in the right-hand column is somewhat less. But basically, the pattern is expected to go, continue to be the same for nine, ten, and then on as well, ten and eleven. Next. So here's the, the basic oh-nine, oh-eight, oh-nine scorecard, and this is what we're proposing for nine, ten. And you can see basically the only difference in real terms is the library, and it reduces others proportionally. Next. The capital program, Bill showed you some charts that are similar to this, but basically we have spent more money than we have gotten in the capital program, and we're hoping that by the end of the ten-year timeframe will be a match. And that's essentially what this is showing. And this is consistent with the council's policy. This is consistent with the acceleration on road improvements, road maintenance improvements. And some of this has been made up for by transferring some of the operating or the base money to this money, but the plan is that over the ten years, we'll spend within the limits. Next slide. So this is the expenditures and revenues. They're relatively closely matched, and the only reason, the only thing that's going on here is that we've actually spent more than we've taken in, in the capital program. Next. So these are the projected, the projected and the actual. The plan is that we will, in essence, end up spending slightly more in this category for transportation than we imagined that we would, but they're, they're very, very closely linked, and we're proposing essentially, and this is one of the big policy questions for you, we're proposing that this next year be the last year we do transportation projects, and that unless we find other sources of funding, we will stop some of the ongoing programs like the Slurry Seal Program and the neighborhood reconstruction programs. We'll just stop until we identify another source, unless council gives direction to do otherwise. So I think that the last slide is, well, this shows the same sort of thing. It shows that at the end of the day, only the, only transportation is slightly overspending, and the rest are within the limits. Next. So what we want you to do is acknowledge and recognize that in fact, one of the big issues with Measure K is that we haven't gotten the revenue that we hope to get. That's systemic. That's not anybody's fault, that's, that's just the way this tax works, and it's not something that will be fixed or as fixable. We anticipate that through the entire ten-year period, we will not achieve the targets that we originally forecast. The, since we did the original allocation, the formula or the approach has been largely the same, and it's resulted in some categories being more than you anticipated, others being less, but that's, that's really what's, what's going on here. There's no, no pattern of trying to do something different than the original intent, it's simply that sometimes the formulas drive a different outcome. You have the authority to make changes, but without direction to make changes, we'll basically continue that pattern. That will be, is reflected in the capital improvement program and in the operating programs, and that's what you'll see in the budget on the fifteenth. And so what we're seeking tonight is either your affirmation that that's the right thing to do, or some direction to do something else. And that's, that's the essential purpose of the discussion this evening.
Right then, are there questions for the city manager? Mr. Vegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Toby, so when it's brought back, will there be a description of what we're not, I mean, obviously, there's a bazillion things we've accomplished, and we said we were going to do, and very successful in that respect, but are there, is there, are you going to identify a?
Well, in the, in the staff report, there's an, with respect to capital programs, there's an identification of the transportation programs that are not going to be done, that were anticipated or at least planned, but we always understood that the possibility existed that we wouldn't have enough money to get there, and that is in fact the case. There, if, if we go forward as our current plan would suggest, what we wouldn't be spending as much money on is light rail and library in the basic category, and we would be basically on target with respect to the capital.
When we did measures J and K, were you, were you and I the only ones here when we put it together?
I don't know.
I think so. Okay, yeah. And we, and we did not, we didn't make a, we didn't adopt a resolution saying, here are the categories, and we want to spend this percentage on, it was, the categories became, they were imputed by the actual projects that we said we wanted to complete. And so the resolution that we passed at the time, you know, identified those specific projects, and the only, in a set of categories, and they were the water rate reduction and the road maintenance and rehabilitation, and then a series of community amenities and improvements with a couple of theories of action behind them. And I said, they should still animate the work that we're doing. I mean, I hate that we're doing this right now, because the pressure to you to change our categories in some way, or spending priorities in some way to reflect the fact that our non-Measure K budget is in such poor shape is pretty extraordinary. But the, I mean, the, this was done because we wanted to find a way to provide financing to lift the whole city as we got, as we got better. And we didn't have development impact fees, or, and much of the city was not, was not in the, the residential areas, not in the redevelopment project area. And this was an opportunity for us to find a different way to finance those improvements and those amenities, which is why, it's not really fair to say that Elkhorn, you know, for example, Broderick and Bright are getting their fair share. Their fair share actually is larger than their fair share.
Right.
In any other way. There was intended that the bulk of the revenues for projects be expended outside of areas where we're seeing new development in any sort of significant way. So that, I mean, that was one of the key elements. The other frankly was, we had no, we had no way to finance community and council-initiated projects. You know, we had lots of big ideas as a, as a up-and-coming city about things like light rail or a historic firehouse, or a brand-new library, or some of these, we had no way of financing them. On all of Steve's five-year capital plans, they were, if they were on there at all, which they usually weren't, they were identified as unknown funding, and they were in year six on a five-year plan. And so the, and it was a frustration to the council that, you know, through community meetings and through elections and others, we, you know, we'd identify priorities and ideas that didn't normally fall out of a normal CIP process, and this was a way for us to be able to, to be able to, you know, advance some of those projects that had no chance otherwise. And then the last piece of it was to create, create a source of funds to leverage other resources, that if we could just, you know, get, you know, get the, some of the initial work done on Tower Bridge Gateway, I mean, Tower Bridge sidewalks, we could get some external funding, which we did, but we didn't get twelve million dollars' worth. I mean, but that was the idea, was that this could, this could, this could be a way to get things ready to go that would then allow us to compete. that would then allow us to compete for private and state and federal and foundation support for projects. And those were sort of the animating principles when we put together the expenditure plan originally and went to the voters and asked them to approve it. And so I just wanted to highlight that, because there's more... It was more those ideas than this notion that, you know, 26.8% should be on transportation and 32% on parks. That wasn't the idea. The idea was really to try to rebalance our portfolio and what we were able to deliver in the community based on what was happening in new development, and to take into account that, at the time, most of this was being paid for by business-to-business transactions.
But there is one component of it, and that was the political component. Because when we went out to sell it to the folks, I mean, we talked about fixing the roads, we talked about reducing the water rates, we talked about police and fire issues. Those kinds of issues that we made political commitments to, I think. And, you know, I mean, I think that... And one of the nice things that happened also was, we asked for an accounting, and we've had that accounting every year. And I think that the community had some skepticism at start, at the start. But as they listened to us, as we went out and talked to them, there was a level of trust. And then, I mean, and I think that that level of trust had just absolutely carried over to the other override. I mean, it was... The council had done all the things they said that they were going to do, and they give us an accounting of it. And so, I mean, I think that it fared well for future times when we've gone back and asked. Now, of course, there are different economic times today. I wouldn't ask today, but, you know, still, at the same time, I think that that went a long way to do that.
That's right. Mayor Protem Beers?
Well, you know, this is a very instructive presentation, and it hopefully... And maybe should be put on the city website or something. I think, you know, there's a lot of good information here that people can see. I guess where I'm at right now is, until we see what the state does to us, I really don't want to make any changes at this time to our Measure K plan. I think it's a good plan. It's a strong plan. I think we need to be realistic. After the state budget comes through, then we have some information here. So, for instance, and I'm not picking on it because it's, you know, my priority, but just, you know, as an example, under the water subsidy, that's going to go away, one way or the other, in two years. I mean, it's just going to drop off. So at some point in time, the public needs to know that's going to occur.
Actually, the water subsidy's in base, so it...
It is in the base? I didn't understand.
So it'd be perpetual.
Okay, well, then, I apologize. But my point is, is that after the state budget comes forward, and it... We see where things end up there. If, at that point in time, there's a choice between critical public safety services versus water rates or whatever, I think we should have that discussion with the community about where do they want to put their priorities. But, you know, until, you know, we've done a good job on our budgeting, where are we at? So at this point, I think we should, you know, stay the course for a lot of the reasons, not the least of which is that, you know, we didn't make a commitment to the community on where we were going to go with these dollars. So I think we should hold that as long as we can. But if something draconian starts happening, then I think we should have an open discussion with the community on what their priorities are at that point in time. That would be some flexibility.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I think I would agree with Mr. Beers as well. At this point, I don't know if we really need to be making this decision to switch courses. And, you know, there's things that look like we could maybe pass on. South River Road rehabilitation, it's getting pretty ratty up there, but, you know, there's other things that probably impact people more directly. You know, code enforcement, we heard tonight, we want to make sure it's on here. Slurry Seal, state streets, I know, those are going to be important things that we need to...
They're doing it today.
Yeah, they're important to do these things. So I would kind of wait to make a major shift in how this money's being spent until we, you know, kind of see how the dust settles a little bit. We've just got through the capital improvement project budget, and it's... We're in the process of doing it. We really don't know where all this is going to set. And what I would want to do is make... To see if there's some critical thing in capital improvements that we're not able to do, we're able to supplement, even to some extent here, that would, you know, improve the quality of life in West Sacramento. So I'm not prepared just to say, "Let's get rid of all the transportation," because I think there's things here that, you know, the roads, particularly in the interior of the city, are important. And, you know, frankly, as a councilperson, we all hear, you know, potholes, and that's the big deal, because it directly impacts people's lives. So I would say, "Let's stay the course, you know, maybe modify for South River Road." But outside of that, it's hold tight for the time being.
The problem is, we don't have enough... We don't have the money to do what we already said we were going to do on both programs, but the capital program in particular. And so I don't know what... There's no Measure K money available to do any other projects than what we had already promised, and not enough for that. Well, we didn't promise a specific set of road rehabilitation projects, but we did intend to get through, you know, the full... You know, the high priority areas of the city. You know, since the enactment of Measure K, and there were periods where we thought revenues were going to grow faster than they did, and we didn't take into account the way that these revenues get assigned, you know, the way that sales taxes get assigned for this purpose as opposed to our regular sales taxes. And so we did plan for higher revenues after the first couple of years than we experienced. During that period, we added things into Measure K that, frankly, you know, are a lesser priority, and they don't fit that metric that kind of guided the original notion. Personally, I don't believe the Bike Master Plan belongs in Measure K funding. It doesn't meet any of those... It's an important need, but we were doing Bike Master Plans before Measure K. It's not particular to the areas of the city that aren't supported by development impact fees. It just doesn't meet those criteria. Street sweeping, same thing. It's a valuable service, and it's... I mean, I guess if you sweep those roads a little more often than they'll last longer, I don't know, it's going to reduce your rehabilitation cost. But it's not... Street sweeping was another one of those... Was not in the original set, but it does, you know, it adds its value, but we moved it over because we thought we had some, you know, slight margin on the revenues. Those sorts of things, for me, I would not, you know, I would cut there first before cutting on some of the elements that were in the original commitments that were made. I don't want to pretend that that's a lot of money, because those aren't huge allocations, but that's where I would go first. The water issue is a problem. I mean, for the reasons that are outlined in the staff report, it's not an emergency issue today, but it is a... It's not a sustainable policy unless we're prepared to have the water rate reduction consume the entirety of the Measure K base. It's not a sustainable policy into the long run, just because of the number of new connections grows at a different rate than the tax revenue grows. And so that's why the water rates, you know, a third over budget, essentially. So we're going to have to do... And we're going to have to deal with that immediately, but we are going to have to deal with it at some point, unless we're prepared to say that nothing else is going to be funded out of Measure K other than the water rate reduction. So, I mean, I do think it's important to flag it. I'm not sure we absolutely have to deal with it right away.
For me, I guess, I get the water rate reduction is an important component of it, because I think it's something that we said we would do. I also think the street sweeping program is... I think it's a good program. I think that the street sweeping program... The only change I would make on the street sweeping program is I would have a lot larger seal for the city of West Sacramento on the side of... On both sides of the truck. People see it, and they say, "You know what? They are supplying a service." And so, I mean, I would just put a great big seal like that thing up there.
You drive it?
About a big flag, a big city flag.
Had "Good Job, Bill" on it, but no. But, and then I think that police and fire, I think public safety is absolutely critical. If I was going to make any kind of changes, it would be under parks and recreation. I mean, these, you know, there are programs there that actually need to... People need to pay for. We, you know, I mean, it's great that we can have it so that nobody has to pay, but I mean, I think that there's... You know, you talk about a fee base. I mean, that's one of the areas... It's nothing that I really jump up and down about, but I mean, still, at the same time, it's something that I would at least take a look at. And then I think, like, the Bike Master Plan, I think that, you know, Christopher's right. And so, but, you know, it's... I'm just sort of nitpicking at items that save a penny here and a penny there. They don't really do a lot, but I mean, still, I mean, if I was going to make any of those changes, that's what I would do.
All right. Any further discussion or guidance on this one? Do you have enough?
I believe so.
Okay. Then 11C is consideration of City and Redevelopment Agency Joint Resolution 09-45, authorizing the redevelopment agency to enter into a contract with the city to fund a portion of the cost of Fire Station 45, a publicly-owned facility. Sholo.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Parksville Administrative Analyst. The proposed resolution and funding agreement provides a method for the redevelopment agency to reimburse the city for construction costs associated with the construction of Station 45. The method is contained in a section of community redevelopment law that allows agencies to pay for public facilities, both inside and outside of the project area. To do so, the facility must meet three conditions, and Station 45 meets those conditions. The first condition is that the facility provides a benefit to the project area. Station 45 serves the south portion of the project area and also responds to calls on high-rise development on the riverfront properties in the project area. Two, the facility needs to mitigate blight. The fourth plan amendment identified blighted conditions in the service area of Station 45, and a... And the service provided by the fire station is considered to be a substantial improvement to public safety, which is a mitigation of blight. And number three, there's no alternative means to fund the construction of the station. And that's been found in the fact that the impact fees for the fire station are trending much lower than planned. If it's proved, the funding agreement will provide for a payment in this current fiscal year of $300,000, and also reflect a $300,000 payment in the next fiscal year budget.
Mayor Protem Beers?
Why is it just for two years?
I think it was intended to match this current budget situation as opposed to...
Well, and I understand that piece, but could it be for longer? I mean, you know, the issue is, I mean, the station provides that service in perpetuity. So wouldn't it be a savings to the general fund over time, no matter what the budgets are?
I can't speak to any... With any authority on that without the city attorney, but I suspect that we'd have to do more of an analysis to get a nexus on the value, because it's proportional to the amount of benefit to the project area. So there'd have to be some sort of analysis made on that in that regard, and that hasn't been done.
Mr. Ross?
I think that the principal answer to the question is that we're dealing with the two-year budget, and we were looking for a source to deal with the current financial issues. I think the answer to your question is, when we came back with the next two-year budget, we would have some sort of analysis about whether this is an appropriate ongoing approach.
Well, my concern was, and maybe I'm wrong, peasant wouldn't surprise me, but that there's potential changes in redevelopment law out there that could prohibit us from doing this prospectively. And it would seem to me, if we want to make that finding, if we want to make this finding, we should make it for as long as possible to, you know, for the purpose of giving us flexibility in out years.
We don't actually think that we can escape new legislation if it were to come along, because you still annually appropriate. And if they... If we haven't... Didn't have a binding contract, which would be very hard to bind a future council on that issue. But we are intending to essentially get the payment of this $300,000 and the next $300,000 committed by this action, so that we are... We're good on the second year of the two-year budget.
All right. Further questions? This doesn't require public hearings, so is there a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we adopt Resolution 09-45, authorize City Manager and Redevelopment Agency Director to execute the attached reimbursement agreement, include approval of the minor amendments, and that in the option, the City Manager and City Attorney will not materially alter the purpose of this agreement.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Kristof and seconded by Mayor Protem Beers. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing done, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sholo. Item 11D is consideration of City Resolution 09-46 and Agency Resolution 09-47, authorizing continuation in municipal normal operations based on the fiscal year 2008, 2009 budget.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. The agenda item before you is to request authorization for both the city and the redevelopment agency to continue spending on normal operations at the current expenditure levels until City Council has approved the budget for fiscal year '09, '10, and '10, '11. Staff is diligently working on that budget and is planning to bring it before City Council for consideration on July 15th. I respectfully request that Council approve Resolutions '09-46 and '09-47 to allow for spending authorization for the beginning of next year.
Has been moved and seconded. I do want to point out, this is a new procedure. We've not... In the past, we've operated without a budget, starting on July 1st, and our departments have just gone on spending regardless. And I know, when I've taught budget classes at the university, I've told them, "Don't listen to people that say budgets matter, because we go one without one, and we just keep going like it was just last year." I think this is an important move, step for transparency and for accountability. So it doesn't change anything, but it makes clear what we're doing, and it does provide explicit authority from the council to keep on operating as we prepare a budget. We cannot do a budget before July, for those that are watching us at home, because we don't know yet until what the... Some of our external funding issues from the state and elsewhere are going to look like. So we've never adopted the budget prior to July 1st, but this allows us to continue operating. Right, so there's no further discussion? There is a motion made by Mr. Vegas and seconded by Mayor Protem Beers. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing done, that motion carries. Thank you. Council calendar. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to remind the council that tomorrow, we're going to have the Courtyard Village grand opening. It's the former Harbor Park apartment complex, and we're getting a lot of activity and interest in that, so it should be a nice affair. And then on Friday, there's the grand opening of the Podeo State Casio on Fourth Street. And then finally, on Sunday, the West Sacramento Orchestra is going to be having a performance here in the Galleria, and this will be in honor of their 50th anniversary as an orchestra.
All right. Any questions on the calendar? City Manager reports?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney reports? Staff direction from members of the council? Mr. Vegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of the public comment earlier this evening relative to code enforcement. Can we just get an update on open cases, closed cases? There's a lot of confusion about what they are and are not doing, or at least that was presented this evening. So it would be helpful. I would be interested in seeing kind of where we are with that. Or maybe having Mr. Brooks come and give us kind of a two-minute on where his office is.
Yes.
Beers?
Well, as part of that...
One more. Sorry. Add one more. Part of, actually, as the mayor alluded to, item 11D, some of the unknowns relative to the state's budget, and it's going to get... Some of those costs are going to be passed on to the locals. Have we ever given, or has our representatives ever given any consideration to at least an exchange for some of the... an exchange for some of the, some of the, the, you know, brunt of, of the state's fiscal woes passed on to the locals, to at least in exchange, request some temporary relief from some of the state obligations that exist? And we have, there's a lot of things that I sat up here to think of this evening, but there's a lot, there's a lot that we have to do, that the state requires us to do, and I know that this imminent, you know, cost burden placed on locals is going to happen, but to the extent that we can at least, and I don't know if this has been explored at all, but there's a lot that we have to do that the state requires. It would be nice to have some relief in some of those areas, at least temporarily, while they raid the local coffers, and I, I just, I offer that up in case it has not been explored yet. Mr. Beers?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, on, on the issues in code enforcement, I mean, I saw the memo from the chief on that specific issue, but I want to be sure that we're not just splitting hairs in there, whether there's contact to the police department, or to, to code enforcement. I don't want to get us caught up in who, who answers the phone type of information. Thank you.
Mr. Kristof?
Just to follow up a little bit on, on Mr. Vegas's comments, I, I think it even goes a little bit further. I guess as far as the state budget and that sort of thing goes, I guess what we need is, if they are going to quote-unquote "borrow," we need some, some kind of language that gives us the guarantee that it's going to be paid back. And I, I mean, I, I don't know how we do that, but I mean, and I imagine every city's struggling with all of that, but I think we could brainstorm, you know, our staff could brainstorm, what kind of a letter, or what kind of a documentation can we get that guarantees that those funds are coming back within a two-year period of time?
Three years in the constitution.
Uh-huh.
If they're actually in the constitution, they have to pay back with interest within three years.
Two, I think.
Three.
Well, it might be, whatever, I mean, it's in the, but everybody keeps saying that there must be something, there's something out there they're afraid of, it's not going to be paid back. And, okay, now, and we all know that, I mean, we've, we've, we've been down this road. But I mean, at the same time, maybe we can draft something that they would sign, or have to sign, that says it pays back, if we're going to send them a check. What if we don't send a check?
I don't think there's...
Okay. And, you know, earlier this evening, during the public comment session, did suspend the normal time limit? In the, in the aftermath of any sort of tragedy, there's, you know, there's, those involved need time to, to grieve and to deal with, with the consequences and implications, and it's not uncommon for there to be, you know, search for answers, and for responsibility, for assigning blame. And I've heard, you know, lots and lots of this, you know, not just in our community, but in, in the newspapers, and the internet, and what have you, and folks who've, others who have attempted to take advantage of a tragic situation to, to advance their interests around, you know, the Delta water supply, or some, you know, the, the number of causes for this neighborhood tragedy that has been described is almost limitless, and it's unfortunate that it's used in that way. But I, I want to just say, because the chief's not here, but that the police department's response has been responsible and measured. At no time did they describe it as a, as a, as a gang-related incident. None of those charges that were made by an individual who's not a resident of our community earlier this evening are correct, and they've been, the investigation's been straightforward, and we have, calls to code enforcement are confidential, and so we're not going to be able to describe, you know, who called when, in a public session. But it is the case that code enforcement and the police department have been engaged and, and, you know, responsive to the extent that their resources allow in this, in other matters, and, you know, there will be lots of reflection individually by family members and, and others, and by us, and by the department. But, you know, cooler heads need to prevail around the, the need to want to, you know, assign some, some blame to, to folks who are just trying to do a good job and protect the, the safety and the health of the community, so. All right, we have no future agenda item requests, is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Mayor Proton Beers, and seconded by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned.